I will call to order the Tuesday, September 12th, Reg. 888 City Council stand for the pledge.
The United States of America, due to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great justice of God.
If everybody can. Okay, we need approval on the agenda.
A second.
Discussion. I want to pull a half. And I don't care.
We will, Mayor, I'd like to suggest to put a rider for the consent agenda would be great.
Right after?
Yeah, before staff and council updates that we can just discuss right away. You can do it after open forum, sorry.
Any other changes? Is Matt on?
All good on my side.
Okay, and a motion second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no, motion carries five zero. Need a motion second for consent, sand item F.
A motion for consent. A second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question on G.
Go ahead.
Have we, the no parking, Paul, I'm going to ask you, does this affect like parent drop off in the morning for school, if it backs up at all? Well, I just wanted to make sure that we were keeping an eye on that too, so that was all I had out of it.
One other question for Zach. Also, in payment of claims, we've got a bill, I guess, from CS McCrossan, says retainage payable, is this final, final from them?
It is not the final file from them, but it is probably pretty dang close. I would defer to Marty to figure out how close they are to finishing that. I know that they're dang close, but not done completely, but this is all just retained stuff that's basically paying off the last little bits of the project, but I'll defer to Marty to answer the question.
They're very, very close, there's a couple of outstanding items, there's some landscaping stuff that we still need to work on, and there's some lighting along the bridge that was the strip lighting that's not really working yet, so we're going to be changing that out and hopefully doing that with CS McCrossan on this contract.
Is that the stuff the network way you're in?
Yeah, yeah.
Anybody got anything else? Matt, do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you, sir.
I got a question on E, I guess. The reason I bring this up is my business is down there. Does this affect a semi parking on Balsam download?
No, because in the parking regulations, it's, would be, they have four hours to unload. This is more because when they do snow removal at the apartment complexes, they remove all the cars off of the parking lots, and if they do that, Balsam would be stacked with vehicles and cause a safety hazard, so that's why we're recommending this.
You good?
I just had one other comment. The Park Commission manual, that was part of the packet, I just wanted to say, I thought they did a really nice job on that. There is, there's some really good information in there, and I think that, to my knowledge anyway, there aren't those kind of manuals for the other commission. And a lot of what was in that Parks Commission manual is sort of universal information that anybody should know, so maybe pass it around to those other commissions, but I thought it was a good thing, I wish we would have had it a lot sooner.
Excellent. Great work, Marty, thank you.
Okay, we got a motion second, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no, consent carries unanimously. Open forum, limited to three minutes for non-agenda items, is there anybody here for open forum? Come on up. Is anybody online by chance? While we can find that. Great, state name and address, no council action will be taken and items will be referred back to staff.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mayor and council members, my name is Tim McNeil, and I'm just starting my stopwatch so I make sure I don't spend more than three minutes of your time. I'm here today to just ask a couple of questions. I had intended to ask these questions at the EDA meeting, however, for the second time, I was not allowed to speak at an EDA meeting. Not being allowed to speak is not, you know, unusual for a council or an elected body. Most cities have done it at some point in time, however, I think it's very unusual to not be allowed to address the body about an agenda item. Maple Grove, Rogers, Champlin have all limited people's ability to speak at from time to time, but they've never, to my knowledge, and the city of Dayton has never prior to this, this allowed a question from an audience member about an actual agenda item. The agenda item that I'm referring to is the sale of some property on Levy Street in the old village, it's where I live, and I'm actually considering whether or not I should put a response in to the RFP, but there are some questions that I want to get clarified. For instance, in the RFP, it says that on the exact same bullet point, it is prioritizing the value of the property in terms of future tax value and affordability of the housing. Those two things are in stark contrast to each other. I'm seeking direction as to what, how to weigh my proposal. It also refers to the historic village and the comp plan, I really found just a few bullet points which have nothing to do with the actual, the actual proposal, so I'm kind of confused about that as well. So, those are the questions I wanted to bring up. You know, I am concerned about the rushed nature of the proposal, it's actually, it was, it was pulled after two years of work and then put in another one within two weeks, and that concerns me a little bit, I think that a lot of the same flaws in the proposal from the previous two years are showing up again, these things in particular. So, those are my concerns. You know, I'm looking forward to getting some feedback, because these are not rhetorical questions, these are questions I need to have answered in order to put a proposal together. So, with that, I will give you guys at least three more minutes back, or thirty more seconds back.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else for open forum? Anybody online?
So, if we do have anyone on the Zoom call that wanted to speak in open forum, they can use the raise your hand function.
What?
My microphone sucks, sorry.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any.
Alright, so we'll close open forum, oh, you wanted to get item F here?
Yeah.
Okay. The reason I had it pulled is because I am confused about the whole thing. This kind of came out of the blue, I don't know that we've ever talked about this option. And I think I want a lot more resident feedback as to if we're gonna not allow parking on Deerwood.
Mayor, council, so what this item is, is we heard from residents that the sidewalk was not desired along that roadway, we still have concerns about pedestrian safety, and so the idea that city staff came up with would be to allow no parking on would be the west side of the roadway where the least homes are at, and have parking only on the east side of the roadway, creating an auxiliary lane, which would basically mean like a white painted line down roughly six feet from the curb on the east side, which would be decide where the more homes are at, that would create a one-side parking and also create an auxiliary lane for people to use as more pedestrian safety and more controlled between where the traffic's driving and where the pedestrians would walk or bikes would use. The idea was to create more pedestrian safety, and that also doesn't impede our plow drivers or anything else along the lines of public works, and does not have more additional sidewalk needed for clearing for the residents, so we thought it was a good option to have. Again, doesn't mean that all of Deerwood would be no parking, it would just be the west side of the roadway, and it would end, just as you get into Hayden Hills development there, just because that doesn't make sense logistically in that neighborhood.
So, on the west side, it would be no parking on the west side, and there would be a six-foot?
Correct, on the other side of the roadway, on the east side, there would be a six-foot, roughly.
On the east side.
East side of the road, there would be a six-foot lane, and it would be painted with a white line, differentiating the area that that's parking or an auxiliary lane.
Oh.
So then you would be able to park on that side of the road with no issues whatsoever.
Parking, bikes, and walking.
Correct, exactly.
All in one six-foot chunk.
All in one six-foot chunk, yep, so typically it takes six feet to park a car without having to take your side view mirrors off, and still allows you to walk around the car without, you know, getting hit, so.
And have we sent a notice to all thirteen residents on that street?
We have not.
We have talked to the people, I think.
Yeah, it's still, that helps a lot, though, but I think I would like to hear.
This is a test, it was intended to be a test to figure out if this is going to work or not, again, trying to figure out if it's a good compromise between no sidewalks but yet allowing pedestrian safety, it doesn't need to be forever, it was more of a test and we were going to put a, you know, kind of a, what do you call it, like a disclaimer for that on our website so that everyone knows what it's for, so everyone goes, what the heck is this, we're not sure.
I mean, to me, the question to me would be as if I'm a resident there and I have some sort of a gathering at my house, you can't park on that west side.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I would, I would say that we need to send a notice to everybody on that street and get some feedback, that's my opinion. Because currently, I believe there's going to be one resident that is behind this.
Yeah, I think I'd like to hear more from the residents too, but I mean, it sounds, doesn't sound bad to me, but.
No, I think that, you know, we couldn't come to any consensus on the sidewalk or the streetlight. I think this, this would add some safety to that, to that road, you know, I don't know how the no parking on the west side would work either, or how people feel about that, but it would, you know, if it was a mess, it, those signs certainly could be pulled, or, or we could do the stripe and add the, talk about, you know, ask the residents about the no parking on the west side. I'd like to see us do something for that, that road, I think there is a real concern there, and I would be okay with going ahead with it, but I take your point that if the residents haven't had a chance to give us feedback on it other than what they may have picked up seeing it on the agenda, you know, that might not give us, give us their total reaction by any means. But I would, so I'm not sure where we, where we want to go, I would like us to keep pushing along on this, and if it means delaying two weeks to get a notice out or something,
Yeah, I think if we get a letter or something out to those residents.
Sure.
I don't know that we need to have an open house, just some feedback, it'd be nice to, because I have a feeling that the pushback's going to be.
We would encourage not having any parking on the one side of the roadway, only because if we paint that white line, if you have cars parked on the other side, now you're going to have cars moving over into that white lined area, it just doesn't make sense logistically from a police and public safety perspective.
When you drive down that road now, there's, there's not typically a lot of cars parked out on the street on either side. People have pretty long driveways, particularly on the west side. It seems like the least intrusive option we've looked at.
Again, this is what, this is what staff came up with, that's like, this is the final ditch effort, we've heard about complaints, we know that there's an issue with pedestrian safety, it's not like there's no parking at all, they just can only park on the one side of the roadway, and the likelihood of having multiple parties on a house that's directly adjacent to each other is probably, yeah, there's probably very small.
Yeah, no, I think this is probably, unless we hear something bizarre, I think this might be a good solution.
Unless they all agree to the sidewalk at that point. I just think it'd be common courtesy to ask the opinion.
Sure.
Before we just do it.
Okay.
Hold on, one more piece of this too, if that's okay? And that is, you know, doing research and trying to find a solution for this, one thing I came across is narrowing of lanes or making, you know, the road narrowed to drive on also helps to reduce speed, studies have found this nationwide, and so as we add this lane, and one of the concerns we heard wasn't just the pedestrian roadway, but also everyone feels like cars are flying down Deerwood really fast, and so I think the, this is twofold, I think it helps with the pedestrian piece, but I also think it helps address what we heard from everyone that came to the meeting, which was the speed on that road is an issue, and so if, if the national studies are correct, and I think it's a good thing just to try this out and see if it works exactly saying, that should also help with hopefully reducing speeds on that road as well as providing safe walking space.
Yep. Okay. Are we good on?
It is in a no, which you gotta do, it's on the agenda, so I need a motion or second for whatever you want to do.
Oh, well, let's table it, so motion and table it.
Second.
Is the motion to then readdress this next meeting?
I think so, I mean, is everybody okay with that?
Should be, yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, we should really get a, we already had notifications the last time, so it shouldn't take long to get a notification out.
All those in favor of tableing it, say aye.
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 All opposed say no, so it's five zero to table it, and like I said, it'll probably be till next.
I just want to clarify that I would really like to see on the next meeting, I'm with David on this, I think we need to move forward, and I think so far this is the least intrusive plan that we've had come forth.
Can she, yep.
Agreed.
Okay. Staff, council, council updates, Zach?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council, reminder, next Wednesday, September 20th, we have our all-employee appreciation party, I'll let you know at the last meeting, but all city facilities will close at 4:00 PM for this next Wednesday.
Is that, where's that at?
That is at, it'll be at the axe-throwing location in Monticello, so.
Confident?
Yep, I'm not sure about my skills, but confident.
Confident you won't be a target.
You won't be a target, even. And then Heritage Day's Friday night event is going to be held at Elsie Stevens Park this Friday, starting at 5:00 PM, the overall event is free to attend, and we have magicians, jugglers, glitter tattoos, bounce houses, and a movie in the park, and fireworks to end the night, all that's been organized, there'll be food trucks and a beer tent starting at 5:00, I defer to everyone to enjoy at your own expense, and 7:40 is the movie start time, 9:30 for fireworks, so look forward to having everyone down there.
I'm going to miss it.
Say what?
I won't be here. I'm going to drive your car in the parade. Why, why not this year? Ah, jeez.
Thank you very much, that's all I got.
Alright, Amy?
So, we've had two applicants for the part-time recreation position that we have open, I think we were hoping for a larger pool, so looking for some feedback whether we want to extend that or relabel it, or.
I'd like to see it extended.
I think that makes sense.
Anybody else?
Sure.
And if you have people you know that are interested, please tell them to apply, I will get that back on the website and post it again on the league as well.
What do you do with the current applicants, do you just let them know that we've extended the position?
Yelled, one of them had already reached out and asked where we're at.
Cause there was a date on the first one, so.
Yeah, and I just let them know that I'd be asking tonight, and I will get back to them and just let them know, we'll figure out how long we're going to extend it for, and if they're, if they're still interested, I'll obviously keep those applicants, but just hoping for a larger pool in general.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else? Marty?
Mayor and council, I only have one thing today, a quick update on the wellhead water treatment, we got the contracts together and got them signed last week, we got a notice to proceed to get signed, that will be done tomorrow, and then we're looking to schedule a pre-economy meeting as soon as possible after I get that back, so we're trying to keep this thing moving along.
Cool.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, last Thursday, five new firefighters started, so looking forward to getting them trained, EMT starts on September 27th. The UTV has been picked up, and it's currently being outfitted, hopeful that it might be back for this weekend's Heritage Day events, so you can use it during that time, I'll have lights and sirens, but it won't have any markings on it until probably the following week.
Evening, Mayor and council, just to continue the update that we're still seeing a lot of carloads of people coming through our neighborhoods and checking vehicles for property, so just continue to keep your vehicles locked if they're parked outside, and valuables out of it, also for Heritage Day, State River Road will be closed, starting at 12:30 from Bracton to County Road 38 in Atsigo, so make sure you plan alternate routes.
Evening, Mayor and council, I don't have any updates tonight.
Jason?
None here either.
Scott?
I don't really have an update, just a comment, I guess, I'd like to, at some point here, coming up before spring, discuss publishing events in the communicator.
Is that it?
That's it.
Travis?
None for me.
I got nothing. Dave?
I had just one question, this is for you, Paul, do we provide any school resource officers to any of the schools in our, in our city?
Nope.
Maybe we just have the one.
Nope, we don't have any.
Don't typically have them?
Nope.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I know that's been kind of a hot topic around town, I just wasn't sure if we were doing anything for anybody there or not.
Nope.
Thank you.
Matt?
The only thing I want to say is I know we have a couple of presentations this evening, and I just wanted to apologize for not being able to be there in person to, for the presentations, but please know I'll be listening attentively on my side.
Alright, speaking of which, item L, EDA update. Mr. Otter, come on up.
So, it's just arrow down when you're ready to go to the next slide?
EDA of Dayton, Minnesota, welcome to the presentation of goals and accomplishments for the 23 season, I am your chair for 22 and 23. Kind of a history and overview of the EDA of Dayton, in 2014, the council conceived an idea of separating the main council from its EDA, following a move that Maple Grove had made a year earlier, since the separation, EDA has experienced four administration changes, eight elections, and the EDA has embarked on a new path in decision-making. Our mission statement is, the mission of EDA is to promote economic growth in the city of Dayton through its attraction of new business, retention of existing businesses, and promotion of managed growth and redevelopment in key areas. Our initial involvement was in the case of Al's Liquor Store, it was a tax forfeiture land, due to the EDA having no funding, we had the main council do their purchase and sale and start the new owner Assured Heating aligning with our mission statement. One of my goals is to create a well-rounded EDA by increasing the members from five to seven, this expansion ensures that our business community is adequately represented, the new composition includes two council members, Solanic and Fashion in 23, and five business members, myself, Burns, Berg, Parelta, and Luther, these seven members collectively represent a ride range of companies and demographics. With the addition of these members, I believe that Dayton now possesses a comprehensive and trustworthy decision-making body, the diverse backgrounds of all members support clear and reasonable and confident decision-making process. One such process pertains to the Levy Street property aimed at returning it to the tax rolls of Dayton, we have initiated an RFP process, this was tax-forfeited property through RFP, Request for Proposals procedure with the goal of resound it and commencing the redevelopment of Old Town. Next, our agenda will be working, if directed by council, on reviewing business ordinances, recognizing any obstacles in businesses both current and future may encounter when seeking to become part of the Dayton community. We also dedicated to fostering the redevelopment of specific areas within the city to enhance the quality and life of, and businesses and opportunities in this great city. As chair, I made a significant change by reducing our in-chamber meeting times from one and a half hours to just one hour, it was important to me that we respect the valuable time of our business community. Furthermore, we worked diligently on having meetings televised because we believe that a complete transparency is absolute necessity in the EDA. We aim to ensure that all EDA members actively participate in discussions and provide their input on all topics. We also encourage EDA members to draw upon their specific expertise and professional knowledge when offering advice, this helps us make more informed decisions. Lastly, we promote, encourage full attendance during our meetings and foster a more inclusive and collaborative environment. In conclusion, the EDA is committed to efficiency, transparency, and collaboration, we value the time of our business community, we promote transparency through televised meetings, and we encourage active participation from all the members, leveraging our members' expertise, ensuring a full attendance, we are dedicated to Dayton's economic growth and improved quality of life. Thank you for the support, and I also have a statement that I wrote for the council.
Hand them out.
Yeah, that'd be great, or we can pass them along if you want.
Okay, you guys have a copy of this, it can go out on the website as well, so the citizens can see it, it's, in a nutshell, it is a express growing concerns of Hennepin County, I know it's been in the news lately, Champlin has named us in a succession of Dayton and Hennepin County, so if you, if you read through this, it's basically a, I personally agree with the situation, I, I think that for what we're not getting, for what we're paying for in taxes, we always end up on the short stick of what this city needs to get, whether it's infrastructure, roads, you name it, I mean, we've personally applied for grants from Hennepin County, and we completely get shot down every time, and I think there's a lot of people that are done with that, I, as a business owner in this city, are one of them, so again, these are, these are my feelings, I think that we should explore that possibility with Champlin, if not Champlin, and find something else to secede to another county, city, something, even make our own if we have to, but it is a, it's a tough decision to make, I want to make sure that we explore completely pros and cons, if it's even worth doing, or how do we do it, and if we do partner with Champlin in this, that we, we have a teamwork that we are all on the same page. So, again, I just wanted to make sure that this was out there for everyone to see, and I personally am in full support of it, as far as the other EDA members, you'll have to ask them and see what they think. I believe that wraps up what I have to say, is there any questions?
I don't really have a question, I have a comment, I, I think that it's certainly worth exploring, and, I mean, you're not going to know if you don't jump into it, so I'd be open to looking at it for sure.
Yep. Anything else?
Yeah.
You'll have to speak up, I'm sorry.
Can you go back a couple of slides on your presentation? Go back one more, I was going to be working on direct council, I have a question, like, I have a family member who, who had a business, and this is Bram, Minnesota, and they Minnesota, and they sold their business to one of their employees through the EDA as like a function to keep business within Bram under new ownership. I was wondering, is there like any insight to the EDA to start programs like that to encourage like financial assistance to some of these startups in Dayton? Is there something like that?
I believe we already have that. It's at the state level, if we can get those fundings, and it's a form that we sent out when Tina Goodroad was in position. We've had those for, oh, going on the better part of five, six years, five years. And if they did want to have some type of a financing program, it is available. I believe it's on our website as well.
Yes, it is, yep.
So it is a function of the EDA. I don't know if we are to get involved as, other than just trying to promote that. We were able to keep one business in town here, and he's sitting at this council right now. So your EDA has worked for you, and it does keep businesses in town.
Oh, I wasn't asking if it worked for me, I was just wondering, because I haven't heard of this program or...
They actually bought the business?
The EDA? Oh, there's some type of function through the EDA.
They may have helped bridge the financing or something.
Something of that nature.
Which that is available.
Right.
It comes through a grant.
Yeah, we have a revolving loan fund that does that, exact same process, that would be able to do it, yep. And that's been initiated, so that's been in place for five or six years. We do not have the state funding that typically we would get matching that, but, and I don't know what the status of it, I can look into it.
And we have zero Hennepin funding for anything. Again, pushing that agenda.
Yeah, us and a lot of other people too, but I mean, we're not the only ones pulling that ship, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Planning Commission update.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Peter Demuth, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, here to give an update for the, the last year. I have listed on the front, the front page here, the members of the Planning Commission, it's myself. I was reappointed in 2024. Ryan Maltzen was appointed in 2025. Darren Brown, I believe was 2026, or reappointed to 2026, and then Paul Crossland to 2024. Similar to our EDA, one of the things I didn't pick up on when I was putting this presentation together, but Tim mentioned it, how they use the business expertise, one of the things about, that I enjoy about being part of this Planning Commission for the city of Dayton is, we have, of the people on here, we have three technical experts within, within their professional fields that can help transfer that knowledge into development and applications. I've come in, myself, I'm a civil engineer, Darren Brown is a commercial real estate appraiser, and Paul Crossland's a, an architect. So just, just to kind of, you know, echo on some expertise that we have within ours that, that we've utilized from time to time, so it's been a nice thing to have.
Yep.
Oh, click on the, click on the, click on the PowerPoint once.
During the last year, we've held, this is kind of just a summary of what we've done over the last year. We've had 12 public hearings, we've passed or recommended two CUPs and three IUPs. We've had a couple ordinance changes come through for the event center, the Mississippi River corridor ordinance, and then we've seen a couple, couple of comp plan amendments, worked on the transportation amendment, some site plan and rezoning, and a couple of concept plans. In February, we did hold a Planning Commission training to talk about what our role was, kind of where, where we draw the lines within the Planning Commission versus what your role is as council and how to run meeting process and what, what needs to be brought to us and not. We, this, this last year, we, we swore in Ryan, Ryan Maltzen as a member of the commission, and then we discussed the village, the historic village framework and 2023 moratorium, and then talked about 2040 future land use in a work session with council. Most recently, some of the things ongoing, most recently, just this last week, we had a master plan work session for Dayton Parkway. I think that went very well, and I'd like to see more of those come out as we move forward. One of the things that we've been doing throughout our meetings is if we see something that, that, as an ordinance, that, that may need to be updated or changed, this, and one of the ones I wanted to point out just this last week, in our fence code in residential, our fence code in the city requires a four-foot fence in front yards. Well, in an agricultural property, that doesn't quite make sense, and so we have a conflicting, maybe a conflicting or a change that we need in our ordinance. So we're trying to identify things like this that we may recommend a change or may not, but just kind of put them on a, in a parking lot and we'll work on them later if we don't have anything else to work on. We're working on a few things with the comprehensive plan updates that are coming, and just, and then we've, we've also identified a few things with, with some of our multifamily residential projects that we may need to look at, both the density requirements and the parking requirements. One of the things that we've noticed is a lot of the multifamily units that are coming in are, tend to be right close to our bare minimum for multifamily, and so do we need to change that? Do we need to increase that? Some of the parking requirements, this, this last one that we, we had one this last week that you guys will probably see in a couple weeks here is just trying to figure out, you know, what's the right number of cars for bedrooms versus units, what needs to be indoors versus outdoors, and do we want, do we want freestanding garages at apartment buildings? Things like that, that we as a Planning Commission think need to be addressed to help prevent further issues. One of the other things that, that I've noticed is, and brought up a couple times in the meetings, just making sure we are getting proper notification for public hearings. We host a lot of them. We, we've been doing it by statute, maybe a little bit further, but a lot of the things that we're talking about impact a lot more than the radius that is required. And so making sure that we're, we're notifying, we're having it up on our website, we're having it in our, or being able to notify the residents so they can come. One of the things I've noticed in the last, over the course of the summer here, we've had at least 15 to 20 members of the public come, come to speak at, at some of our public hearings. It's a lot more than we were getting two, three years ago. And so people are more concerned about some of the things going on and, and are wanting to be more vocal about it. One of the things that we need to do is elect a vice chair, and then it's on your agenda tonight for the new, new appointed Planning Commissioner, and so we'll have to train that one in as well. May not be a bad idea for the, the whole group to, to go through it again, just as a refresher. Continue, you know, continuing into 23 and 24, you know, as development and applications come in, continue to review them. I kind of put a snapshot here of some of the things that we consider. When we look at it, we know staff looks at it, we know staff looks at it with the ordinance in mind, we also have our own, own inputs and, and concerns, you know? How does it impact the surrounding properties? What's it connected to? What's the bigger overall vision? Are there things that we have under our history or staff, or, or under our history as neighbors to this that we may know or have a better idea of, of how things can be connected? You know, we review, as, as site plans for some of the new neighborhoods come in, we review sidewalk connections, where those go. Some of the things I think about is just even as simple as bus stop routing. How's a bus stop going to get through, and do we have a sidewalk connecting to where a potential bus might pick kids up? One of the things I know Paul spends a lot of time looking at is architect, the architectural review, making sure it's compliant not only with our code, but also pointing out areas of improvement that may not be that cost prohibitive to the applicant. And then is it compatible with the neighborhood? You know, it might be a compatible land use in, in nature, but is it, and by code, it might be allowable, but is it really truly compatible? And so those are, those are a lot of the things that we, we look through. I know we've talked at, at the Planning Commission level, we'd like to see a few more master plans, maybe even some in current. We'd like to talk about, about having some of that. And then I brought up the ordinance drafting as one, another option, or bringing those forward to work sessions instead of a meeting. You know, we're, we're kind of butchering the ordinance a lot and spending a lot of time for staff, and it'd be almost better to have a work session where we have it up, up and editing it live versus trying to...
Back and forth.
Yeah, trying to do the back and forth and making sure. And then one of the other things that, that, as we've been talking recently about a lot of the, the general mixed use units or mixed use districts throughout town, I noticed there's some language in our ordinance that I'd like to see changed, and I, I would think my fellow commissioners would, would agree, but it, it calls out that it may all, it calls it as a general mixed use unit or use district, but it, it says it can be all residential. And I don't know if that's really the intent that we had when we put this together a few years ago, that we would want general mixed for the whole area to be a all residential. So it's something to consider, something to maybe bring, bring to a work session or talk through at, at one of our meetings. And I guess with that, you know, we, we're going to continue to look at and review applications, provide input, identify codes, ordinances that are outdated or in conflict with the intent, and then kind of, and try to look high level at all proposed active and past projects to create orderly development. One of the things that I know I've talked with Dennis quite a bit about is, have we done things, even if we did something in the past, did we do it right? And we still may have time to change some of those things, and so this is, you know, as we're looking at the new stuff, even if it is an active or a past, can we, can we step in and change it before it's, it all becomes past projects? And we're wishing we would have done it differently. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Anybody? Matt, do you have anything?
I don't have a question, I just want to say thank you for putting together a wall of deck here and coming in front of us. And then also, I want to say thank you, because I do agree with you, you guys have a good amount of background on the, the commission, and I actively listened to all of your meetings, and I learned something every time I listened to it. So I just want to say thank you all very much for your service to our community.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
All right. Item N. Dayton Creek Edition.
Is it already out there? Share this one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, before you have an item, the Dayton Creek Edition preliminary plat introduction. So this is an application on two properties, both north and south of Dayton Parkway. The application is by Ken Strier of Chaney Group LLC. Address incorrect there. It's 52 acres in total, guided mixed use and zone A1 Ag currently, and it is in the 2020 Musa category area for services. To kind of go over the plat as a whole, this is a unique plat in that typically when you see a plat come forward, you see infrastructure go along with lot development. This plat would plat the right-of-way for the streets and plan for all the infrastructure while leaving all of the areas for development as outlots, to be determined in the future on what would potentially go on those outlots within the general mixed use category and the land use. So this picture image is the north half of the property, the north 23 acres, which is shown, outlots B, D, and E would be for development. Outlots A and C are one large wetland complex. So you can see that there is a majority of the site on both the east and west half that are outlots for wetland area. There is shown a future street right-of-way with utilities extending to the north across the wetland to service outlots B, D, and E. And I'll come back to this once I get some of the text for the other pieces to talk about. The other piece is on the south half with outlots F and H, and in this case, the F and H both have developable area and along with some wetland area as well. There is a street shown, it kind of gets cut off between the two screens a little bit, but on the northeast corner, there is a public street that is proposed through there, along with a connection down that will need to be public with the utilities that are shown in here to service outlot F as well. So there will be a street connection to the north and a street connection to the south to service both those lots and the future developments within those lot areas. Just going to run through the applicant, in this case, just provided some materials they wanted to share. This is the previous concept plan that was brought forward about a year ago, showing some of the land use areas, so you can see the wetland areas, you can see the orange being high-density residential and the red being commercial areas. Those are where those outlots B, D, and E on the north half are, and then F and H are on the south half. Those, with the preliminary plat application, we don't have identified users for those, so at this point, they're just remaining high-density and commercial in nature. So staff is planning for those uses, being a commercial or high-density, and having to plan for the range of uses that could land within there being, you know, commercial can have a variety of users, so planning for the most intense of those uses at this point, because we don't know what it's going to end up being. To show a better aerial photo of it, just showing both sites together, you can see the northern road connection and the southern road connection, along with another connection down to outlot F. Just another depiction of showing what the breakdown is for the lots. So this is a unique, unique plat that plats the right-of-way and relieves the remaining as outlots. The applicant wanted to bring this forward as an introduction, and staff was supportive of that, given the unique nature. There are two comments that the applicant does want to address from the staff review. There's comment nine and 10. In your packet was included the full engineering memo, this is nine and 10 from that engineering memo. Nine refers to the extension of the right-of-way shown on the northern portion of the plat, that it must be extended to the northern property line through outlot B to serve the parcel located to the north. Comment 10 refers to outlots A and C whose boundaries follow the delineated wetlands, but don't incorporate wetland buffers, and staff's recommendation was to include those undeveloped buffer areas within the outlots, so the wetland buffer signs would longer run along the outlot boundaries. So staff doesn't recommend varying from these standards, but the applicant does wish to present to you their reasoning on why they want to deviate from these standards. And just to show you the depiction for the part, the right-of-way running to the north, staff's recommendation, and in the letter in comment number nine is to extend this right-of-way all the way to the northern plat boundary through outlot B. If you're familiar with the area this service is, and I'll kind of run back to this slide, there's a triangle parcel to the north that is currently landlocked, as the county has said, they won't allow access onto Brackton, so they need access from the south, so they're essentially undeveloped or can't gain access until that right-of-way and the road is extended through there. Outlot B, at this time, we're only requesting the right-of-way with the road to be constructed when outlot B develops, so it's just gaining the right-of-way access, but not the street at this point in time. So the street would be only constructed up until the access into outlot B, but not through outlot B, as it would likely be a cost share participation between when outlot B develops and the lot to the north for the triangle parcel to cost share and the improvements that would cost to get up to that triangle parcel.
How, where would the right-of-way go when you don't know where your, what your final answer is? I mean, if they don't know what's going into...
Final designer layout. Is it like the final designer layout and everything?
Yeah, if they don't know what's outlot B or the north lot, especially if they're sharing that cost, how do they know, how will they know where to put the right-of-way? Or how will we know where to put it?
Through conversation with the applicant and the city engineer to know where the right-of-way would be presented based on contours and elevation.
Or how will we know where to put it?
Through conversation with the applicant and the city engineer to know where the, the right of way would be presented based on contours and elevation, other impacting features.
So segueing off of his, like, the triangle piece to the north, they're, they're just, at some points, just be like, you just get this, and that's where your access is.
Well, that, that's a part of the conversation, too. That's the whole ball yarn, as you will, we have to kind of look at it from all those angles and all those pieces, because they have to utilize that access and not Brockton, so it has to line up or should line up with their future development. I mean, we can't dead end it into a wetland for them.
Right.
Right.
Have to avoid natural features and things like that.
So the intent of this is to have just a preliminary and not a, not really a final or?
Well, the street wouldn't be designed, so the street could land somewhere within that right of way area.
Yeah. So there will be a final on at least the right of way, so this kind of, whatever you want to call this thing.
Correct. Yes. With the final plat, there would be right of way that would be dead.
But, okay, I guess we can.
Yeah, Mayor, we're not looking for where does it go tonight, we are just requesting that. The applicant is saying we, they do not want to put the right of way in, and we are suggesting and recommending that they do.
They do.
Put right of way in. We don't care where, and again, we have to figure all that out, but we are requesting.
We want to have the conversation first.
And the advantage for them for not wanting to do it is more cash out of their pocket.
Well, it doesn't cost them anything. We're asking to construct it, we're just asking them to allow us the ability to construct it whenever the chance happens. So what we don't want to have happen is that the right of way is not given to the city. The north parcel wants to go before that outlot B can go. Now the north parcel cannot get it because they have to gain access through the outlot B.
Now there's a building or something in the way or.
And now, correct, or there's, or there's not able to get it, because the, if the applicant at hand said, you can't get it, but it costs you $4 million, they're not going to get it, you know, because they have to get the land rights, whereas if we get the right of way, they can build it because it's the city's portion of land, if that makes sense. They can still build it without having any cost share if they don't, if they don't want to, but they could still construct it because it's no longer their land, it's now right of way from the city, so they have access to gain.
Okay, go ahead.
If that makes sense.
So those are the two questions before you tonight. I'll give, so there's no action needed tonight, this is just an introduction of the item, so it's just comments only at this time, and the applicant, we'll give them a chance to come up, and it's expected that this would come back. Two other applications were submitted with it, so it would come back as a whole preliminary plat with a comp plan amendment to change the staging from 2020 to current and rezoning to rezone from A1 agricultural to general mixed use five for the southwest mixed use district, and that is expected to come back, public hearings are posted for the October Planning Commission, and then in front of you for the end of October City Council meeting.
So this one, this will go in front of planning?
Yeah, it has not yet.
Will they take our recommendations?
Yeah, we'll bring them forward to Planning Commission, yep.
Cool. Anybody got any more questions for Kevin?
I'd like to hear what the applicant has to say.
Yeah, you can move on.
Hi. It's Street, and nice to see you all again.
Nice to see you.
My grandson Brian.
Nice to meet you.
Brian Street. Thought it'd be a good experience for you to meet you.
Probably.
All right.
We'll see.
Oh, I thank you.
So listen, thanks for taking the time. I also brought Vicki Van Dell, our engineer on this project with WSB. I've done projects exactly like this before, and, and my methodology has worked out well before, so although I have some differences with staff, I urge you to give me fair consideration from my perspective, from the landowner's perspective. But we have to get through a lot of regulatory approvals because of all the water we have here. So I don't know that, if you could bring up that colored map again, I apologize, thank you. As you see that map right now, that's not the way the water is. This is what we're hoping to do with the water. So when you see that gray lot on the south, okay, that actually has the, has the floodplain in it now, and we're moving it off of there, or we're putting it in there so we can have that red lot be developable, because there's water there, too. And so.
So the gray is?
Gray, gray right now, gray will be floodplain. We're going to move the floodplain from the red on the south now, just so.
Just so you can, yep, I get it.
Okay. Everybody, okay?
Yep.
So, so that's that, and then, so, so one of the things we're here tonight to do is get over a couple of these hurdles that have been presented to us to try to get in front of the regulatory agencies. Now, I can't name them all, but we're talking Army Corps, DNR, something called Bowser, I've never understood in my whole life, the watershed district, floodplain management, you know, there's not enough government agencies involved, and so that we can get the land ready to be able to sell. So we've had people call us about buying it, but I can't give them an answer. I can't give, and, and in all fairness, e- either can you. You know, we can say we'd like to have you, but we can't tell them when, we can't tell them how, we can't tell them anything, so, I'm going to move that up. So that's why we're here tonight, and, and so we're going to catch 22. Now, a few of the staff issues, one of the staff issues is number two, or I'm sorry, one of the staff issues, I believe, is, is number sticks, the drainage and utility easement over all the land. I have never had to do this, I don't want to do it, and you don't need it. I'm only coming in to get this preliminary plat done so I can get answers to the questions. But now, I, listen, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not going to practice law here tonight, but I will tell you that the lawyer for not just this client, but I've checked with others, I'm like a newspaper reporter, you, you can't just trust one lawyer, you got to talk to more than one. In theory, a utility company could come in there and put their utilities wherever they want, because you've got a drainage utility over all of it, so that could be through the center of the land, it could be this or that. And, and again, at this stage, for what I'm trying to accomplish, you don't need it, okay? So we would respectfully request that at the time of final plat, we're obviously going to give you the appropriate drainage utility easements, road easements, all the easements you want, but I just don't want to do that, and that's number two. Number 10 deals with boundary lines. Now, staff is recommending that the outlots not include the buffer. I'll just think of this for a minute, and look at all my water, all right? Now, I sell that land, you tax that land, I spread assessments over that land, it may be buffer, they can't build on it, they can't, you know, all the regulations for wetland buffer, right? We're not taking that away from anybody, but for gosh's sake, I got hardly any land to sell after I get, you know, do what I'm doing, and you have even less taxable land, all right? So why not put the outlot lines, or the lines for lots when they get developed, why not put that right where the wetlands are, and then they're going to have to have the buffer? Now, again, you have to take my word for that, you know you control it, and you're going to control it when site plans come in, and you're going to control it when everything else comes in. So to not include that land area, and if I, now, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that's 25 feet, look at all that wetland and think of 25 feet coming off of all that land. Now, I believe we can average, you know, we can, you have to average 25 feet, so we can get narrower, but we still have to have the wetland buffer. So I respectfully, again, requesting that the, that the boundary lines not be as proposed by staff, but rather that they be right along the wetland thing. By the way, I think since we met last time, we have had our delineation approved, so we have more accurate information than maybe even this map depicts. Our, our wetlands have been delineated and accepted, and then the next one, I'm going quick because I appreciate you getting me on. All right, now, the next one I want to talk about is, we had proposed a private street on the south, that doesn't go through because nobody is going to let me apparently go out to 101, which actually is a pretty good idea, but apparently the county is not a fan, so I was suggesting private. Staff wants public. I would respectfully request that if we go public, we only do 60 feet there. 60 feet of right of way instead of your standard 80. Again, I'm, I'm doing that because we've got developmental constraints. Don't have to answer that tonight, give it some thought, but I don't think you need 80. You'll have plenty of room, that should be, now, I got to turn my head to my engineer. I believe that's enough room for us to have lanes, a turn lane, and a center lane, you know, where they got the arrows, and that's all we need for this type of development. Okay?
Okay.
All right, now let's get on to the big one. I got a letter, don't get too excited about this. In talking to councils, I use a lot of verbiage, and I want this to be very articulate, so I requested that the attorney for the LLC draft this letter, which you, which I'm handing out a copy to, did you get one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. To say what I'm planning to do and what I'm, what I'm not planning to do. And I wanted it in black and white, and again, then you don't have to believe me. So all my presentations so far tonight has been telling you how I want to do this, but I'm leaving you in 100% control. So this letter, and I'll give you a minute to read it, is what I want to accomplish and why. So I don't want to plat that road on the north. Now, my biggest reason for not wanting to plat that road on the north, and let me be real clear, I'm, I need that other plan, I'm, who's doing that? Are you doing that? Thank you.
Which one?
The one that shows that, no, not that, that other sketch that shows it, right there. See how I, the difference between these two is on the one, I stopped before the waterway, and now I'm on the other side of the waterway. Does everybody see that? It's not quite as clear, but see where I'm talking about? On, on the north where goes outlot B.
Outlot B, yeah.
Right, and I want to stop at basic, oh, perfect.
I was going to try and zoom in, but.
It was almost perfect.
Yeah.
Where you got the.
Oh, now I'm just breaking stuff. All right, we'll just, I won't try to zoom in.
Holy cow. But he's doing a lot better job than I would, so I can't make fun of him. All right, so listen, right there where I've got it crossing the waterway, now, we didn't bring that to you the first time. I'm telling you why I changed my mind, is because once we get to these regulatory authorities, we've now learned that we've got to get the answer because these groups change, and they, I, I have stories I don't want to bore you with, but where the parties change. So in, in one city I worked in, this is about two, three years old, for three years I worked to get a road like this through all those agencies I mentioned. The biggest one I had a hurdle with was the Army Corps. So one day, you know, I'm a patient, calm, mild, milquetoast little guy, I get so damn mad at this, I, I call them down there, and I tried to get hold of the person I was working with, and they were, they, they left. Yeah, so I got somebody else, and, and she said she remembered me, had met me before, and I'm thinking, oh, God, I hope she liked me, and she even liked my cigar, and she said, I never agreed with them, so we'll get you done in 90 days. Well, it took 120, I wasn't mad at her, okay? So once you get these people agreeing to what you want to do, and you get them on paper, and you get them locked in, this isn't just me, this is all of us, and this is the guy to the north, if you're worried about him, he can't do a damn thing to the extent that you're not going to let him out there. None of us can do anything until I get something done with, with crossing that waterway. I call it a waterway, and that's that water that goes between outlot D and outlot B. Okay? Now, I got the same problem on the south, if you look, when you get off of the main drag there, and then you come down what I'm hoping will be a 60-foot road, when you get down there, I've got to cross that, and that's not small flowage. I think Jason told me I got to have three big pipes to, to handle that water coming out of there, okay? So I feel like Aquaman, for God's sake. So what we want to do here is I got to get approval across that, too. So we want to take it all in at once. Now, I don't want to plat that road for all sorts of reasons. Number one, I heard what Zach said, I like Zach, he does a good job, but I want to tell you something, I don't agree with him, because we don't know where the damn road is going to go, number one. Number two, number two and more important, we don't know that they're even going to let me connect my road to where that road is, where I'm showing it. I, I could see them, you know, saying, oh, no, if you go far, move that road over. Now, we've got curvature problems, you know, I don't know, when I say you decided, I don't even know if this body decided where that curb cut was going to, it was probably a MINDOT decision. So we have to, so I don't know that, but here's the big one. Most inquiries I've had have talked about buying both parcels at one time, which would mean there'd be no public street, it'd all be private. So now, if you read his letter, all I want to do, and, and read the last sentence, it's the most important, Chaney Group agrees not to seek to replat outlot B until an agreement has been worked out and entered into the city to provide access to the land adjacent to the north of outlot B. I leave all the control in your hands. But to plat that now, that's not going to happen, and I say that in a friendly way, because I'm trying to get along with you. And so right now, we can't sell a damn thing, we can't talk to people about buying something, we can't do anything unless and until we get through these regulatory agencies, and I can't tell you, I regret to say, I can't tell you how long that's going to be. I'd like to think it's a 30, 60-day process, but on, on more than one, I've had to work years, years for public streets, for, for public streets, not a private development. I want to remind you, I do appreciate your time. Now, I mean, I'm here to answer any questions, and if I can't handle them, I'll have my grandfather.
So as far as number 10, the buffering, I thought this came up before, and it might have been the planning commission, but the whole question of buffering, because it does seem, at least me personally, it seems odd that we have to buffer something that's all over the place. And I, I get that these things have to be very clear when they're written down, but you got all kinds of, of wetland all over the place, it does seem odd that we have to consume.
Let me add something to this. You know, if, if we think of a typical residential project, not a multifamily, but just a single family detached, okay, and the guys buy a swamp, you know, I understand those big setbacks because, you know, you don't want it, fertilizer and other things encroaching. We're talking a commercial area here. I got your 10-foot drainage utility thing, I got to have so much green space, I'm curbing and guttering all that water, and then I got to put it in a storm pond to purify it before it hits there. Buffers in commercial areas, in my mind, aren't, you know, they got a code, it says 25 feet, okay, I got that, but the reality is that in commercial areas, you probably don't need that much. Now, you say, well, what about the 100-year event? Well, when it rains that much, the water flowing in there is, is not the bottom of the parking lot, it's the water on top is going over. So I, I don't, I don't see as big a need in a commercial area, but that said, to take that land out of my lots so you don't get to tax it and I don't get to sell it, is, and I always do it this way. Now, that, just because I always do it that way doesn't mean you have to, I know that, but why not work together and get that done right? So we're not abolishing the buffer, we're, we're leaving it, but we're putting it in a marketable position instead of more vacant land.
All right, so I, I follow you there. Where I'm a little bit confused at is on the, on the road piece, I, I kind of don't understand how you can draw a road until you know what the, what you're building there.
I agree. And we can't get anybody to decide what they're going to do there until we know we can cross that water, and we can cross the water in roughly that spot, and I can give them a timeline. So if you came to me tonight and said, hey, I'd like to buy that land, and, and we had the best user in the world, whoever that is, and we had the highest price we could ever get, we can't tell them when they can come in, and then they go away because they want to move on to what they want to do. We got to get this resolved with the regulatory agencies, and that's really all I'm here to do, is to get the sewer water and streets kind of resolved here.
What exactly is the concern with that, this, with running the road up through B, or the, the right of way, of defining that early?
Uh, cities, I mean, it's typical policy to extend right of way to the edge of the plat boundary, because you have to provide access to your next, the next person down the road, in this case, to the north.
Yep, I, I get that, I'm just wondering, can we, can we request so much land and not necessarily define where it's at with that? Is that something that we can do? Or your concern is that this thing gets going, and all of a sudden, they decide not to run the road through.
Correct. If they don't provide it now, they, they, the city, if and when down the future, would have no tool to, to get the right of way to extend it to the north.
Yep.
Wait, wait a minute, I, I, I'm just asking this question, what the hell am I going to do with it? I can't do anything with it until I come back.
Well, I think, so, for example, you're saying, what if turns it into a park, of all things, right? And, and now you don't put a road through.
Or one user.
Or one user.
We have opportunities in the future that if it were platted and split, that there's the option to take right of way at that time.
That's why I brought the letter. We aren't going to take it out of outlot status without, without having this question resolved. It doesn't need to be resolved now, it needs to be set aside now. It needs to be set aside now, and we aren't going to, that's why I wanted the letter from the attorney, because some of you guys think I BS you a little bit. I'm not BSing you, I'm telling you the truth. And I had the attorney write something, so I got some street cred. And I said, listen, give them something that they can rely on, from a law firm, and blah, blah, blah. I can tell you, we're impressed. And, but, I want, I, I'm serious. I wanted an outside authority outlining in black and white for you, all that we'll do, and we can't do anything more without coming back to you, including making that a park.
My...
I can't build a house? Go ahead.
Yep, I would have, my question to the council would be, what happens if the lot, if we, if you go with the fact of no plating right-of-way, because it's hard to plat, and I'm not disagreeing with you, and I don't think staff is disagreeing with you, it's hard to plat right-of-way. But if the parcel of the north finds somebody to go forward with their project, but now the roadway's stuck in Outlet B, we still have to replat it, if you do not plat it now, the person of the north has a project ready to go, rip-roaring ready to go, and can go right now, but they do not have right-of-way or access to get to Outlet B. The Shady Group has control over it, and they, so that it has to be with the city, which is good, but again, it doesn't help the person to the north get their project any faster.
Well, I want to be transparent about that. Shady Group deserves some control, because they're spending all the damn money to get this, this road figured out, number one. Number two, I mean, I, I'm being candid about that. But number two, if they got the best user in the world, I don't get them on Outlet B, I don't know why they wouldn't come to me. But if they went up there, okay, they can't get approved. You know why? They can't get a road across the water. So unless you're going to let them out 101, they can't get the guy going either. And I'll tell you something, nobody, and I'm saying that I like those guys, so I'm not bad-mouthing them at all. I'm just saying, they're in kind of an uncomfortable position till we get what I want to do here tonight figured out. Because they can't go forward at all. And then at that point, at that point, if I really want to be a, a bad guy, now, who, how are we going to get all that done if we're not involved? I think, I think the Shady Group has been aggressively cooperative with the city on a lot of matters. You know, your easements for getting the bridge, and on this and that, and the other thing. I think they've, and now they're taking a leadership, and an expensive leadership role, in getting these, these items resolved, so we can cross that water. But if Outlet, the lot to the north of us is ready to develop the best user in the world right now, they can't, because they can't cross the water without those regulatory approvals. Come on. We're taking that on.
And any preliminary plat that you would bring back to the Planning Commission, that would include Outlet B, would have to show those roads?
That's what we're saying in the letter. That's why I put it in black and white, so you had it and didn't have to rely on me. Because I know you think, you know... No, I'm serious. I, I wanted something in black and white for you to say, hey, this is all I want to do, this is all I'm going to do, and we aren't going to move it from a, from an Outlet position until, without coming back to you, and you've got control.
So let's say we figured out where the right-of-way was, you're, you're saying that we at least want, we don't want construction, but a right-of-way.
Correct.
But, without construction, the north property can't do diddly anyways.
Correct, but we're not, the Shady Group isn't responsible for that construction.
Yeah, that might be the new guy buying the property.
The Shady Group is likely responsible for construction of the pieces they want to service at this point in time, or up to there.
Yeah.
The extension to the north, the approvals and everything with the construction of it, would likely be a cooperative between these parcels and the parcels of the north, because they would have to provide some of the funding to get the road extended to the north.
It sounds like the conundrum is, where would you put the right-of-way? And I don't know how we get by that. I mean, how do we, how, unless they know what's going in in Outlet B?
The, so I'll be honest with you, staff hasn't looked at where the right-of-way would go, because we wanted to answer the question first, on, it's staff's recommendation that we extend the right-of-way to the northern plat boundary, which is typical for all of our plats. We brought this question before you, with the question of, the applicant would not like to dedicate the right-of-way, staff's recommendation is to dedicate it. Where it will go, staff will figure out with the applicant and the property to the north. We haven't reviewed and analyzed specifics on that, because we want to figure out first what direction.
Well, and the big mistake there is, if in fact they're developed jointly with an apartment project, okay?
B and the north lot.
B and the north lot. There won't be a public road. It'll stop...
Oh, that's true.
It'll stop on the other side. And I can think of other environments where that could be true. If you had a office tech area, if you, there's a lot of uses that could come in there and say, I don't want the public road. But again, I'm not doing anything that, that doesn't leave the power with you as I came in the door. All I'm saying to you is, I do not want to plat it now. And I don't want to plat it now for all the reasons I gave you before. And you've still got all the control. Ken will be genuflecting to you as I come in again.
What is, what are the ramifications of putting the right-of-way in the wrong spot? I mean, let's say we put it somewhere, somebody, whoever the act...
Then you come back and renegotiate where it goes.
Then you just replat the, the right-of-way and the properties.
Vacate and replat.
You can vacate it at any time.
I personally don't see any arguments with what he's suggesting.
I, yeah, I, I...
I understand the idea of getting the, putting the road there for the, for the corner.
For the northern triangle.
Yeah.
If we do nothing, right now, if we, if we do nothing...
Nothing happens.
Both landowners in the same spot.
Yeah.
If we do something, we've greatly enhanced the value of the land of ours, and we've greatly enhanced the land for the city, and we've really greatly enhanced the land to the north of us. If we get this accomplished.
Ultimately, you're committing that there would be access to that north property.
Ultimately, we are. We say, we're not going to take it out of the Outlet status, other than these few things I wanted to do, until you approve it, period. Until the city and the, and us. Now, I didn't include the other landowner, obviously the other landowner would be involved. I didn't include him, because if he ever, ever, never wants to do anything, I can't be handcuffed. So if I do something that looks like, and by the way, if you look at that lot, it kind of doesn't matter where the hell I put the road on the top for him. If I put it to the far left, it doesn't work bad for him. If I put it to the far right, it doesn't work bad for him. If I take it right up the middle, it doesn't work bad for him. So I, if I want to be a bad guy, it doesn't matter. You control.
Did, did you guys get this letter prior to...
No.
No, I just, not off the press. You got a copy, though. It's a short read.
Thanks.
And the most important part is that bottom paragraph, where it says, I can't do anything beyond this.
That is the most important part.
It is.
And I would have the city attorney look at it, just to make it ironclad. I mean, to me, to me, that, everything he's asking for is fine, to get it started.
As far as just the letter...
As far as that, Outlet B?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'd have to review with the city attorney to make sure and see anything like that, and staff would more than likely want something to be recorded against the property.
What would you record?
That, that's what we'd, like, we'd have to work with a surveyor or the city attorney to determine what that document would be, whether it's an exhibit and some type of land document, or an agreement with the city attorney. That's, I can't even speak to that, because that's not my area of expertise, but that would be something that staff would have to look into. And it's not something we currently have, because it's not something we've done before.
Well, so this is, there's no action on this anyways, right?
Correct.
In the Planning Commission, we can dump it in Outlet?
Well, I, I would like, I would like direction before we go to the Planning Commission, because here's the way I see it. I don't really want to go to the Planning Commission until I get these regulatory approvals, because we could be approving something that doesn't get approved by them, and then we're back and wasting everybody's time.
Don't want to get your ducks in a row.
So, if, if staff needs something from us, why don't they, you know, talk to the city attorney, they got my number, they got my number in more ways than one, and, and, all right.
I, it seems like we should be able to somehow work with you here without, go ahead.
My feeling, too, is that, I'm not a lawyer either. You know, and, and my read of this seems to, to be the same as the way you're presenting it. If that's, if that turns out to be the case with our legal review, I, I don't have a problem.
Okay, so what about the drainage utilities?
Um, that was number s...
Nine.
Number six.
Number six, yeah.
Six on your, on your staff report.
I didn't think there was an issue with that. What, what was...
Um, that's, yeah, comment number six. I'll just note that that's a city code requirement, and any variance from that would require a variance application. That's not a policy, design standard.
I hate to ask, but what are the details of that?
So that's just, the, the comment is, all Outlets shall be covered by drainage utility easements.
Because he's plating all Outlets.
Because he's plating all Outlets, they all have to be covered by drainage utility easements. That's just a city code requirement. If we, there'd have to be some reasoning for a variance for that to move forward, and I don't know what those reasonings would be.
Well, there's three, isn't there? I mean, isn't that the, the test for a variance?
Yeah. It'd be the hardship if there was not for economic gain, and all the criteria that we'd establish for a variance. But I'm just letting you know, that's different from just a standard that we may be able to find an alternative for. This one, not doing it, when it's required by city code, requires a variance. So I just want, because that would be an additional application that we'd have to submit and work through with the applicant.
And are those, once, once Outlets were actually converted to, to a new preliminary plat, would those easements be vacated, or what?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
It's a standard practice to dedicate drainage utilities on Outlet.
So really, what we're talking about is an easement that's a placeholder. It's not even a placeholder.
Correct. Yeah, it's a tempor, I mean, it's not a temporary easement, because you have to vacate it, but as soon as a plat comes forward, to develop those Outlets, the e, the drains, the underlying drainage utilities get vacated, and they will dedicate the new 10-foot, 5-foot on the boundary lines that we typically require when you go to a lot and block. That's standard with a plat.
Okay.
So that's just one of the unique pieces, because this is all Outlets and not your typical Lot 1 block.
Yeah, and that's a lot of this, is, it's kind of backward, it's kind of...
There's things we have to put in place, because we don't know the end result. We don't know how the site will develop with what user. We don't know what the layout is for parking and landscaping that you typically see with a lot. So we have to treat it as though it's the highest use of that commercial or multifamily or high-density residential, and then we also have to put the things in place that are required on Outlet.
Let me, let me suggest, if I could, well, I don't, apparently not at this minute, but sometimes I'm creative, and I'd like to be able to come back, talk to staff about that. I, I really don't want to do it, and I am getting some pressure from my clients not to do it, but let me see what maybe we could compromise with, or come back and say we can't, you know, whatever happens. I'm not sure, in light of what you, you're thinking, and I'm seeing some heads popping, let me just think about that. But you, you understand why we don't want it, and we, and we, they understand, I think staff understands, that without knowing what the project's going to consist of and how it's going to go, I'm really here just to get the road sewer and water kind of approved, okay? And they wanted the preliminary plat. Now, a lot of times, I don't have to do a preliminary plat to get this done. All I have to do is get a concept plan approved. And the watershed district and Army Corps, they'll just take the concept. But staff wanted this, so I got, I got to think that one through. So I, my, my suggestion, if it's okay with everybody, is just, you know, let, let's set that one aside. How about the boundary lines for the buffer?
I, I think that's workable.
I do, too. I don't know, do we require, so you said something about maybe an averaging?
There, now, I don't want to speak, but a lot of cities allow us to average. So you got 25 feet of buffer. So we go all around a lot, for example, you got 25 feet. Now, if I've got a dead corner, I can bring out, I got a, I got to average, but I can bring out enough over here to offset maybe something that benefits me there, and I believe you can go down to 10 feet. Am I right?
Yeah, I can probably add to this, I think. They're, they're not asking for a deviation of the buffer requirements, they're asking for where the lot lines are placed in relation to the wetlands in the buffer, just to make that clear.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's a, it's a 10-foot minimum buffer, 25-foot average.
So you'd still have your buffer, we just want to include it in our lot to, what am I doing that for? To sell it.
Okay.
And you get more taxes. I mean, it's a win-win for everybody.
I don't have an issue with that.
I don't have an issue.
I don't think that's a problem.
It's all going to be curbing and guttered anyway.
Matt, you going to say anything?
I've, I've been in agreement with the council so far and everything, so I'm good.
Dave, you have any more? So, okay.
No, I, I think if it still exists, you know, within, the buffer still is a requirement within the lot lines.
The buffer will still exist, and it still is to be protected, the difference being is now they could influence, the owner could influence or modify it without exiting their property, if you will. So the reason we would typically put it within the Outlet is just so they would be trespassing to create any violations in the buffer. It's protection.
Okay, so number six, you're going to talk to staff about it, work with staff?
What about the, what about the private road?
60 versus 80?
Can 60 feet work for you folks, or do you need 80?
Those kind of things, I tend to rely on the developer to figure out what's really necessary, but, you know, that'll be something probably the Planning Commission would chew on. I don't know.
Offhand, I would recommend going with the standard, and part of the reason being is because we don't know the traffic needs. Another part of it is emergency vehicles. Yes, two lanes is probably fine for traffic, but if law enforcement has somebody pull over to the side of the road, and it's a busy area, that could be a problem. Another component is the walking trails and sidewalks haven't been nailed down with certainty, and this is a search corridor for Three Rivers Park District, so it might be that there's a 10-foot Batuminas Trail in there, we still want a boulevard for snow storage and other maintenance activities, so that full width may be required to fit all of that.
Why would that have an impact on the 60 versus 80?
You did the right-of-way to include the trail, the utilities in the roadway.
We put, we put trails on the, we put that on lots we sell. We don't put it in right-of-way. So when a guy buys from me, he's got to have 10-foot drainage utilities, man, you put the damn trail on that and let him buy the land. It's a win-win for everybody. I, you know, and you've got, I, I, listen, I, I understand fire safety, but you've got plenty of, of room there, because you've got the, the three lane, you know, you've got at least three lanes in there plus. You'll have the center lane for turning, you'll have the, I, I really, I really, I really would appreciate a positive direction on that, because 80 feet there, look, look at what I got to work with to begin with. I mean, you may have to turn this into a water park.
The 60 versus 80 question, is that something that you could, so, one of the issues is, I mean, our, our Planning Commission is pretty well-versed in this stuff. I don't know that we have as much expertise as they do. So, is the 60 versus 80 something you could push to them, or do you want to...
Well, let me ask you this. Do you hate the idea of 60 feet?
I don't hate it.
I don't hate it. I don't, I don't know what's required. I mean.
Well, eighty is currently required.
Hard to me to picture without.
It's only being required because you don't know what's being built.
You know, you've been down those roads though where they got the, the turn lanes in the middle. And if you look at the way the lots lay out here, I probably only need that there because I've got one lot to the north and then the, the one on the south is wet and then I got the big lot, uh, outlot F. So if you think about transportation and so forth. Now, what happens to outlot F? If it's one user, it's one thing. If it's multiple users, it's another. But at this stage, we don't know. What we're really in this for right now is to say we want to cross that waterway. That, that's what we're here for, uh, that's what I gotta get to so I can get through those regulatory agencies.
I, I would say from my perspective, um, I would definitely give the planning commission on this and I would just default till eighty until they advise otherwise. Because I think Dennis is right. In my mind, they've got the expertise and I would look to them for that personally.
Is there a way to do it with, uh, once you find out what kind of a user, you go with the sixty, but all of a sudden if you got a user that's going to create one and a half times the traffic, then you gotta go to eighty?
That seems more than fair to me. Multiple users would probably create more of that traffic instead of one, you know, yeah, that's fine.
Yes, my concern with the width is not what the cars are going to do, but where are the, the bikes and pedestrians going to go?
We would put those trails on the landowner's land. We put the, we would have them give the city an easement.
It wouldn't be part of the sixty or eighty.
It wouldn't be part of the sixty or eighty. We're, we're not trying to get out of, out of, I'm not sure we want them on both sides, to be honest with you. We got, we got water on the, I'm talking about the south now. We got water. I think on the north, we gotta be careful up there. Depending on what we did with our lot and the people to the north of us do, there may be a situation where we want them on both sides and we, and we gotta have more traffic there anyway because we're providing access for a lot. But down here, depending on what happens, yeah, I, I don't, I don't really see that, that need. It, it's going to be going through to that end lot or it's going to be taking a quick right and going up into the first lot. The south is all wet. We don't want a trail there anyway.
So is that eighty that we're proposing, is that include a sidewalk?
That includes space for it.
Correct.
Which, if, if that's going to be someplace else anyway, it makes sense.
I don't know if I would be so quick to say that can go on private property just because of the Three Rivers agreement if it does become a regional component of their system. And the new easements cannot be used for trails without special designation.
What's the agreement with Three Rivers?
That they would have to have an easement over, over it. Maybe, I'm not lying it out, but I don't know that.
They haven't purchased the property or anything, correct?
They haven't purchased the easement. It's a search area, so they haven't identified the court.
In other words, are we waiting for them to do something before we can sell the property again? I mean, that's my point. You might wait fifty years before that thing's done.
Maybe.
Or you go to Three Rivers and say, if you're doing it, let's go. I personally wouldn't wait for somebody if, if there's a four, five, ten million dollar project going on.
The comment from staff was also that we would consider a lesser configuration once we've had a chance to discuss what the users may be with emergency services and come to an agreement on that. So this is one of those conditions that we had on there that we hadn't fully discussed through with the applicant. And I want planning commissions to.
Let's, let's do that. Let's just, let's just get, let's get through the roads and wetlands and DNR and army corps and all those fun people. And I'll expect you to be at those meetings. And why don't we all go to there and, and spend all that time? But, but, but I think user driven's a fair comment because I don't know and we don't know. And I can't find out until I get my roads in, so.
Is this another deal where we, we want right of way allocated even though we don't know?
As long as there's a plat associated, we could take additional right of way. That'd be our, that'd be the city's tool.
Well, later on, we could, okay.
Correct, yeah.
So we're safe doing?
If there needed to be some kind of, I don't know the agreement with Three Rivers Park District, but you can have the applicant or work with them to designate private trail easements. That would be just for that purpose. I wouldn't recommend going there out, but that's just another piece that we need to discuss with the applicant as we move forward on this one.
What happens to all the regulatory bodies if, let's say you assume sixty here and later on it, it's realized you needed eighty?
I think the biggest issue there is not so much the width as the crossing.
Okay.
And how we're going to do it and how we're going to manage the water. Because we're probably going to have to pipe it under both those roads, north and south. So I think that's a bigger issue. But, but you're raising a good point. If we get to that point, we're gonna, we're gonna go in with the eighty so we're covering everybody's anticipations.
I think we're hearing some willingness to consider a narrower width, assuming that the.
Unless all of a sudden it's decided that we need water.
It's also addressed.
He's gonna know that once he gets a user in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know that we can go any farther with it.
I agree. All right.
Can we get everything?
Look at me, I'm a happy guy. I appreciate what we have done. I really do.
All righty.
Thank you Ken.
Thank you.
Farther today than we were yesterday.
We are.
Okay. Item O. Oh, is that you in here?
Yep, so, um, we have the planning commission open. We hired John Sevold onto staff and so his seat is open. We posted it. It's been in a few updates. Um, we had three applicants and.
I have a question here. To me, it should be up to the planning commission to figure out who they want to use or who they want to work with. Has planning commission looked at the applications themselves and we don't have any recommendation from them on who they would like?
No, because city code says that the council appoints all planning commission members.
Yeah, well, we, we would end up appointing it, but they could recommend who, who they would like. It's just a recommendation.
So is that like a, an ask to change the code then to say?
Well, I think they should have the ability to, to look at who they're going to be, that's me.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. I'm not saying I disagree with you. I'm just saying like, is that something that should be noted in the code then that we would take the recommendation from planning commission?
Well, I don't think that's a bad idea, Scott. I think previously, you know, Ryan, we didn't go down that road. So I think if we want to go down that road in the future, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think that makes sense. But I think we should move forward on this current process and, and present that as future commission appointees are needed, in my opinion.
I, uh, my opinion would be we, we post it again. I, I just didn't, I wasn't, I didn't get any sense of, of urgency and I, I, I'm not, I just didn't, uh, nothing jumped out at me in the three that we got. So I'd almost like to keep it open for a while. Be my take on it.
So, and, uh, so I've read all three of them. After reading them, I called and talked to two of the applicants. And I, I believe one of the applicants would be a, a good fit for the position.
Yes, my concern is that since this has, has come up and the, the window closed, I've heard of several people that were unaware for various reasons that it was open and would have applied and probably would apply if they had the opportunity now. You know, this is a pretty important spot. The planning commission does a lot for us. And we just talked through some stuff that I know I don't have any expertise in and we really look to the planning commission to, you know, to have that. I would, uh, I'm a little bit uncomfortable picking out of this, out of this pool. I think that, you know, all of the individuals have merit, but I guess I have at least a concern with each of them. And, um, my hope would we, would be that we could keep it open a bit longer and, and see what else we can attract.
I have no problem, I have no problem keeping it open or reposting it, I guess. I mean, to me, there's one applicant, there's one applicant that has somewhat of a chance, I guess, in my opinion, but.
Do you have a timeframe you are recommending?
How long was it open the first time? Two or three weeks?
Thirty days.
Three weeks, three and a half weeks.
I thought it was at least three weeks. It could have been four weeks.
Since August.
So do we, do we not feel four weeks is enough time for someone to, to apply? I guess I'm, I don't disagree, David, if there's people out there that want to apply. Part of me wants to, to see the applications and part of me goes, we have thirty days. And I don't think we were, we were shy about this. You know, we had to vote to, to hire John, so there'd be a vacancy coming. Talked about it over multiple meetings. I guess I'm just, I, I'm torn on it, I guess is what I'm saying. I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just being proactive enough. If you want to be involved in the community, to just know what's going on out there is, is, I think, part of it. And that's where I'm torn.
I think that's, you know, that's, that's fair, but, you know, I think back just a couple of years and this was my, my own experience. I applied to be on the, on the planning commission. And the council interviewed eleven applicants and every one of them looked to me like they were pretty well qualified. They picked somebody else, so I'll always have a problem with that process, but. But my point is that, you know, there, that that, this is only a couple of years ago. There was a large pool of people interested in doing this. Where did they all go? And, you know, did we not get to them somehow? It just seems like we ought, ought to have had a bigger response to this, to this opening than we did.
And I think a lot of times, uh, the applicants hear by word of mouth. They don't necessarily see it wherever it's posted. And it, it almost seems like it's a crap shoot as to how many people you're going to get depending on a lot of factors. But again, my, my issue was I just, I was concerned about the candidates that I seen, so.
Where does the city advertise for these openings?
Uh, so for commissions specifically is just on our website and then I give you guys the updates of, hey, we have this opening. If you know someone interested, please have them apply. We've done Facebook posts and, and others as well. When it comes to city positions, there's the League of Minnesota Cities that offers an additional tool to help advertise as well. And I think we've also, um, had positions posted in the paper, local paper as well. But we really relied heavily on the league and that's where most, all city jobs or government jobs are listed. So if that's what you're interested in, that's where you go to look. So commissions are a little bit more difficult to advertise because there's not really a place other than our website or word of mouth or.
Just curious, like even back in the day, it was like, it was just on the door.
Facebook, I think we had it in the communicator.
Before. It was like, and then we had like eleven applicants, you're saying, it's like.
Yeah, I have no idea why, but there's been a decrease in people running for council. There's been a decrease in people running for the mayor position. There's been a decrease for all of our commissions. You know, I've heard from this body that you're going to have so many applicants for this part-time position and then we received two.
And they got squat, yep.
So I, I don't know why. I, I'm open to receiving the direction of how you want it.
I'm just trying to think outside the box. Like clearly what we've been doing in the past try, gives us like little to no results almost. So it's like, what other alternatives can this body think of to like, hey, draw up interest?
We would be open to suggestions.
I, I, I just.
It'd be great.
I'm just putting it out there.
I wonder if it isn't something in this building because now all of a sudden we got another brand new employee leaving again.
Oh, I think it might be something.
Thank you.
I think it has something to do with this building.
Okay.
Backup boy.
Where do we want to go? I, like I said, I, I do soon open it for.
I would just hate to have it open for thirty more days just to have nothing happen of it and then we just wasted these people's times.
Yeah, my only concern about keeping it open is we're relying heavily, which we always are, on the current members. Um, it doesn't give any wiggle room for someone to be missing a meeting or, and we do have some things coming through, larger projects that have come through, but.
Yeah, it gives a lot of wiggle room.
I don't know.
Yeah.
To Matt's point though, we have three people.
Go ahead.
Can I address the council?
Oh, sure.
Please come up.
If you get something.
Please just stick your.
Name and it.
My name is Anthony Albright. I'm at fourteen one oh one Berkshire Lane North and I am one of the applicants.
Okay.
So if there are any, uh, doubts or concerns that I could assuage at this point, I'd be happy to speak to those or talk about how I found the position or.
How did you find it?
How did you? I was actually on the city website looking at ordinances because we were looking for a fence application and I saw it there, so.
You went through the fence applica, ordinance?
Yeah.
Did it pretty?
Well, we wanted to make sure that we were in line with all the ordinances when we were building things. So I, I was in charge of studying all the ordinances and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So Dennis, I've got a question for you. It's okay, because you mentioned that, you know, you, you looked at the applicants. Did you, or maybe that's you, the council as a whole, like did anyone reach out to the applicants at all?
No.
Talked to them?
No, I.
I did not.
I did not.
I don't, yeah, I don't know that's, I mean, to me, a, a list of, um, the application is kind of a first, first layer screening for me, so.
So you're saying you, you did or you, you didn't reach out?
I did, no, I didn't talk to anyone.
Not reach out. It's a first layer screening, so what's your second layer then?
If we're going to interview candidates, we should do that as a group, but. Historically, we, at least recently, we haven't been doing that. I, I just, and like David, I, I, there's been, uh, like a couple of people that reached out to me afterwards and weren't aware that it was an, there was an opening, so. And, and, and again, that's no bolt of anybody's. It's happened.
I just think that goes back to Matt's point, like that's the investment piece, like if you want it.
People aren't going to sit and, I mean, it sounds like you accidentally found it, so. Come on up.
You as well.
Peter Demuth, the chair of the planning commission. Um, I've got a few comments on this that I thought would at least shed some light. So as a planning commission chair, I actually didn't even realize that John had resigned from the planning commission. When he did, I had to watch the meeting, uh, I believe it was two or three days after I sent an email copying John, seeing that he was missed on a, missed on it, um, for a very obvious reason after I watched the meeting. Uh, so I kind of felt like a dummy, but I wasn't actually even notified. Then I actually went and tried to find the application for the planning commission and it was, it was tough to find. It was not easy to navigate. It was not posted on the planning commission's page, which I think that's probably the most important spot where it should be posted, not under applications like you would for a fence permit. And no offense, but that, that, that's just the way I've seen it done at other cities when I was looking, when I lived elsewhere. The other thing to note is during the time that this was posted, uh, we, we had, uh, we, there was one, uh, planning commission that we did not have a meeting and so we didn't.
There's a big gap.
There's a big gap in there, so we didn't get our chance to help advertise or know about it or know what's going on with it.
Right.
As planning commission members, so I feel, I don't, I, I feel I understand where some of the gaps are and why we didn't get nearly as many applications. We weren't given, as planning commission members, at least me being the chair, I wasn't given any direction to help recruit or find someone.
Fair water, anything like that.
Because I didn't even know John was gone until.
You missed an email.
Yeah, so.
Peter, do you think two weeks would be enough if we tried to address this next city council meeting? For you to kind of, you and the other commissioners to get after this a little bit more maybe?
I, I, I would be fine with that. Um, I guess one of the things I would request is, I don't know who, who the right person is and just to make sure that the other, I know Ryan's sitting in the room right now, but, um, and Darren and Paul usually chime in, but just make sure that all the other planning commissioners are aware that we're extending this, that we are looking for applicants and we want to get a good pool of applicants, um, just so that we know as well. I mean, right, everyone has, everyone, everyone in here has, besides staff, has professional lives outside of this. And so we have, um, you know, we have a lot of other things going on. I know me and Ryan also coach and I know Paul coaches and so we've got things going on.
Complex schedules, yeah, absolutely.
So we're not always paying attention to the council meetings right when they happen. So it'd be helpful if we could get some direction from staff on maybe reach it out.
Do you feel there's urgency to fill this position within the next two weeks, month?
I.
Trying to give us a timeframe on just kind of what to do.
We had a meeting, we had a meeting on, uh, it would have been Thursday last week.
Thursday, yep.
So our next meeting would be October fifth. And, you know, certainly if we can't fill it by then, I, I mean, I don't know what's coming. That's part of the problem.
And then our meeting would be on the ninth then?
Oh, the tenth.
Tenth, yes, sorry.
So if we want them at the next meeting, we would have to, as a council, appoint somebody at our next council meeting.
Well, and then we'd only have it out there for not even two weeks then.
Right. That's why, that's why I suggested the kind of the tenth and just.
Is there any value, Peter, to you guys getting a look at the app? Is that an interest or you don't care who you get?
I mean, I, I think there, there would be interest, um, but I also understand that we kind of get, get what we get and that's kind of part of this process and the way it should work.
Yeah.
You know, we should be out there helping, helping market the position and, and helping advertise for it, but maybe not persuading who gets it.
And then just, just so we're clear, on our city website, all open positions are under the about tab and employment. So it's not under permits. Um, so if you would have went to employment, which, um, maybe we can better clarify that or, or have a spot maybe on the commission page itself is a great idea. I know we're trying to avoid putting it in multiple places on the website because then you get, one place got updated and the other one didn't. Now it still looks like we have a opening and, um, so we just really need to find a designated area. So we kept the employment area for all applications, whether it was, um, commissions or city employment or whatnot. But, um, so I think we're open to suggestions or even having a spot on that planning, um, maybe even just the list of you guys saying, open see, please see employment page or.
That might be good enough, just to know, to know where to go.
Sure.
Because if someone was watching the planning commission last meeting, they would have seen a vacant spot. But then I would not, I mean, obviously I'm on the planning commission now and I was on parks prior, but I would have, you know, just going to that application page, I wouldn't have, employment page, I wouldn't have gotten, thought about it. Because I think our city website's been revamped since I.
Yeah, and then it was just the perfect storm with lack of communication, which, um, I'm not pointing any fingers or, um, saying it's anyone's fault. It's just, um, we lost the city planner position, so the associate planners are newer here. We're using a firm that, you know, there's just that lack of.
A lot of big moving pieces.
Yep, a lot of big moving pieces. We hired on a planning position hoping to improve the communication between the commission and staff, so.
So I'm, I'm thinking, you know, another three weeks.
Yeah, and then bring it back to us at two meetings from now.
So on the tenth.
Yeah, October tenth meeting will be that.
Yeah, October tenth meeting will be that meeting. Yeah, so they would have to be closed by the fourth then, so we can make sure we get it in the packet on the fifth.
Okay, so I'm hearing we're gonna.
Given Peter's recent input, I'm okay with that, too.
We're going to keep it open for, or I'll extend it for three weeks, get it back, post it up on the website, we can mention something on the Planning Commission page as well. And then are you wanting the commission current members to review the applicants to bring so many forward to you? Are you wanting to change the processes? I'm not saying, just because that's the way it's always been done, but it's always been the council who's decided who's been on the commission, so.
Yeah, that makes, it still makes sense.
Yeah, well, yes and.
It's just, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm thinking it would be nice to have, I'm not sure, I, because I, I think it might be handy to have the commission look at it, but at the same time, I'm not sure how, how we would mechanize that, because, I mean, would you have them take a vote or would you have them, you know, I don't know how.
I mean, to me, I'd value the recommendation. This body doesn't get that choice, it's the people that decide here, so. I'm not sure, I, I don't think we, we fix it for this.
Yeah, we, we don't, not for this one.
But I, I think we should talk more about it. I, I see the value in having the commissions having input on the, you know, who they have to work with. Where I get a little bit, and this is not a fully formed thought, so that's always dangerous with me, but if, it can be that, you know, the, the mentality on, on the Planning Commission is that, you know, we're all technical experts in one area or another and this is a technical role and that's what we, you know, and we all nod our heads together, so that's what we're going to have.
That's what we want, yeah.
But as a council, we've got to take a broader view on what do we want to get out of our commissions, whether it's parks or, or so on, so we, you know, we wouldn't be bound to a recommendation from the commission, but I think it's problematic to, to not, not accept that generally, and so I don't.
That was my conundrum, yeah, now you're asking for a recommendation that you might just ignore.
So I don't know what the right balance is there.
Yep.
But I would like to, I'd like to talk more about it.
Right.
If I could actually speak to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, the expertise that you've mentioned, you've got your architect and you've got an engineer and, and all of these technical positions, right? My technical expertise is in language, I'm a sociolinguist, doctor of sociolinguistics, so it seems to me like communication is one of the pieces that you're struggling with between the, between the commission and the planning, and so I think that's a service that I could provide, so. I know this isn't an interview, right, but, but I just want to put that forward, that perhaps that's a strength that I could offer.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Peter. Okay, so we're, we're set on that one?
Okay, so it will be open for three more weeks.
Yep.
Any additional, so I'll let the current applications know that we're just extending it, they will still be in the running if they would like to, and then any additional applications I will send your way once we collect all of them and we'll make a decision on the tenth.
Sounds good.
Okay, well, until that, I, we were dead on. Item P. Wake up seven minutes between ten forty-five.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, yeah, do you guys want to take a break?
Yes.
Recession for five minutes.
Okay, wonderful, take a recess for five minutes, thank you very much.
Every one of the items before, so it translates through all of them. And I did update all of them on this sheet you see in front of me here. But I did not have those updated in the sheet you saw on the packet. I'm trying to move this thing because we get in the way here. So private tax capacity increase was twenty six point nine six percent. I do want to go back actually one minute. I know we talked back. There was about three or four meetings ago. We've talked about how twenty six point nine for six percent was the tax capacity increase. And we came in just below that. And I told you it was a coincidence. It's even more of a coincidence because technically it was less than twenty six percent when we came in on the first time with the preliminary levy because I had the percentage wrong. So it was actually in the twenty five percent range when we came in the first time, when we first talked back in August. So I know we talked about it and you're like, I don't think that's correct. And that's one hundred percent a coincidence that happened because it, the math was even off in the formula. So twenty six point nine six percent tax capacity change. You have a question? Yes?
That was my question. That's an updated that that's.
Yep. So tax capacity didn't change at all. That's, that's the correct percentage of change. The tax levy number was the, not again, the change in dollars wasn't, but the percentage was. So that tax rate, if we approve that tonight for preliminary tax levy, again, it's not the final one, but the preliminary one would bring the tax rate from thirty five point six four to thirty five point four one. So it would be a slight decrease. Graph for these, just kind of show again, visualize with people who may not be a numbers, numbers people like myself. They would be graph people. So the black line on the top graph we're looking at is the tax capacity and how much that's escalated since twenty twenty two. You can see a much steeper curve line. That is related to all of the new growth we have in town. The blue line is the general fund levy, the green, or I should say the blue bar. The green bar is related to debt service, which has significantly decreased. It's down to a amount of two hundred and ten thousand dollars until we get rid of that bond in twenty thirty four, something like that. It's on there for a while. And the red bar on the bottom is the EDA, which is also very significant. Again, it's a hundred grand. So nothing much changed. But the bigger the gap is between that bar and the black line is the lower the tax rate is. So relative aspect of things is look bigger, the difference there, the lower the tax rate. And then I put the graph in the bottom right. I know it's been a stickler, stickling point amongst council over the last few years is what's our tax capacity, which is the blue bar? And what is our tax levy change over year over year, which is the red bar? As you could see back in twenty twenty, we had a larger tax levy increase than the tax capacity. Because it is not a one to one ratio, that likely means that the tax rate stayed the exact same those years. And as you see moving from left to right, you will see that the tax levy has been less than the tax capacity change. If the tax capacity is higher than the tax levy, we will always see a tax rate decrease. So we have signif, we have seen that over the last few years and it's been significant. Last year was over ten percent. So.
Twenty twenty is also when we put in the illustrious franchise.
Oh, yes. So if they had that in, then, yep, correct. So I just want to show you that in twenty twenty four, we are less again. So again, we lowering that tax rate number. I was able to get final twenty twenty three numbers from the county before this meeting, so I do want to provide those as well, just as a perspective of where we're at at the, at where we sit today as of twenty twenty three. Not where we sit preliminarily for twenty four or where we sit for the final of twenty four, but where we sit as of today. We are at thirty five point six four percent. That is of the surrounding communities, right in line with Champlin, Rogers. Maple Grove is an outlier because it has an enormous amount of commercial districts. And I will tell you their spending is probably six times ours and they still have a lower tax rate because they have all the commercial business. But lower than Corcoran, Ossio, Golden Valley, Book and Center, those communities that have been fully grown out after a while, run into constraints with having new construction and having ability to spread those dollars out over time. But.
How is Independence as far as development? Are they even half or more?
They are roughly half of our market value. So maybe a little more, maybe I think ours is over a billion dollars or one point two billion dollars of total market value. I think they're around six hundred thousand or so, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars. But again, right in line with Independence. Once Independence grows, I think they'll probably lower their tax rate, but they're just too far out there quite yet to gain it. So. Impact on the tax bill. Everyone wants to know what costs. Again, this is only for the city of Dayton. This is not anything to do with the county or the school district. Unfortunately, we don't know those numbers and I couldn't tell you what they are, even if I had a wild guess. So I look at the average number or average house value. It didn't jump from four hundred and seventy some thousand to five hundred and twenty five grand in twenty twenty four. And so went from, if we look at twenty three, they'd pay eighteen ninety three to the city if their house is valued at five twenty five again in twenty four. Which again, I don't know if they will or not be, but if they are, they'd have a decrease of twelve dollars for the year or a dollar per month. They'll decrease their taxes.
Do you know what the average increase was on the value?
I don't know what the average increase was, but if you use rough numbers, if you use a ten percent factor, that's generally where you're seeing it. Again, some will be higher, some will be lower. The ten percent could also be an effect of the fact that people, a lot of people, when they get a new home, they add a deck. They had a pool, they had any impervious surface like a patio or anything else that's considered part of a building for a process or remodel their house as in finish their basement, whatever. Those are incorporated in that ten percent number as well. So I'll use a blanket ten percent, but it could be five as a general number. And then additional could be on top of that with remodels and decks and so on and so forth.
Thought the, so they usually reassess every one fifth of the city. Is that right? Every time they do?
Yep. Every, I think it's every year they do one fifth. So every round of the five every five years.
Is it one third?
I think it's one third.
And, and didn't they say that the average jump was like twenty, I thought they gave us a number, the average jump in that section.
I don't believe so. I don't believe it was that high. I know when we talked to.
I think it was twelve.
Yeah, it was more like ten or twelve percent. Yeah. Yeah. So the, I'll tell you that it's how the tax or the rate works or how the percentage works is very odd. We learned this was last year. So we learned it from the county assessor that the state sets a, basically an amount that they think it's supposed to be. And the county has to essentially argue against it. They were successful this year in arguing against it because I think they said twelve or fourteen or something percent that had to increase for everybody. And the county was successful in getting it down to like six, just based on their market data that they did, which was something that the county did for us. So that's a plus. But again, I don't know how it starts with the state and they give us a number. I don't understand how that works. It comes from the county level and it's nothing to do with the city at all. So we just kind of get the force fed information of here you go, here's how it happens. I couldn't tell you how any of the backend calculations work or how any of it's even, you know.
Well, the reason I was wondering that is because a lot of the people I talked to, including me, the value, my value went up twenty five, twenty five percent.
Sure. Yeah. Like I said, it's, it's a wide range because you might have somebody who may even had a decrease. I mean, we had those individuals that were in here arguing values in the spring. And they said, oh no, well, every one of them got approved for a decrease. I mean, so there, there is a wide range. And unfortunately, I wish we did what Scott County did, which is they give you a tier of how many homes did X percentage of change. So Scott County provides a change of how many homes in the entire community changed by X percentage.
What does Wright County do?
Not that, but I can take a look and see. Hennepin County does not do that for us. But again, I don't know if we can.
Okay.
Go to Scott County. I'm not sure that works. Scott County does it very nicely. And I will say that I did appreciate that when I worked in Scott County. Levy changes impact to homeowners, just to keep this in mind when we're talking about levy numbers is a one percent reduction in levy equals about sixteen dollars a year. So a one percent decrease from twenty two point seven five to twenty one point seven five is sixteen bucks a year for that average home. It's about a buck thirty three a month. And then one percent translates to sixty seven thousand dollars in the pocket of the city for able to fund operations this year specifically. And a one percent reduction in the levy dollars results in a point three two percent reduction in tax rate roughly. Again, that's a rough calculation as best as I can for every one percent. So when we're, when we're talking about one percent, it's not a lot for any which one. But it does equal real dollar sixty seven grand is not something to shy away from, from the city, but it does.
As soon as the value stays.
Correct. Again, I, we can't control it all is all the value changes. If I could do that, I would be a genie.
No, but we can control much money we take from each homeowner. And that's, that's that math.
Correct. Yep. That's what I mean. That's why I give all the numbers because it translates to every one of those is a different perspective of looking at things. So we're looking tonight is to approve resolution thirty twenty twenty three and thirty four twenty twenty three, which is the preliminary tax levy and the EDA preliminary tax levy respectively. And note that the percentage change from twenty three to twenty four was incorrectly calculated on those resolutions that I provided you. Like I mentioned, it was not twenty three point six four. It's actually twenty two point seven five percent. By all ways, I'm here to stand for questions. We have all the department heads here to answer any questions you may have. The floor is yours and we'll stand for anything we can do. If I go back to any slides or whatever, just let me know and I'll happy to do it.
So I think a lot of this has been hashed out of the past, past couple of months or so, work sessions, but I don't know if anybody, you guys have any additional stuff?
I do.
You want to go?
Go ahead.
Oh, handouts. That's number three for today.
These are my numbers. This is what I personally would be okay with. I've talked with Zach about it. And for Matt's benefit, I'll read off all the numbers just because you're not here to look at this piece. On one column, we have all the cost increases, fuel, whatever. Those things we can't get away from. I mean, that's just the way it's going to be. Police had ninety seven thousand, fire, fire had ninety four five, public works is a hundred and fifty six, parks sixty seven, three fifty. And then in talking with Zach, we got to build in the lost permit value into there of three and a quarter. I would be okay, the offset increases and credits that makes, and, and Matt, you made the comment that the increases were like six hundred and fifty bucks. They're actually about four hundred roughly. That number comes down to a hundred and ten with some of the credits. If I, if I, to me, I, I think for four hundred grand, Paul, you can get two and a half police, police officers. There's four hundred grand you do with it, what you want. A caveat there would be to get that third officer, the, the full third. We need the traffic guy in there for that forty to fifty, sixty thousand in revenue from citations. In fire, I just cannot get around the, the extra part, the full time person, assistant chief. I do see some merit with the fire marshal thing. I've got kind of a mixed deal there and it goes both ways. Because I see that as kind of a, a way to strong arm businesses. However, if you've got a business that's really lazy about having infractions, that guy needs to be corrected and I get that. So to me, I could, I could go along with the contracted fire marshal. I personally don't want it as a city employee. Just because I don't know how, how often that fire marshal is, how much do we need him? I don't, I don't know. I have no idea. And do you, do you inspect that guy? I certainly don't think we should go to businesses annually inspect them, maybe, maybe every three to five years or something. I'm not sure of the process and how it works. But all of those numbers come up to one point two eight nine eight five. And I personally would take the EDA money and knock it off of there and get that budget at about one point two. And I believe that comes out to about a nineteen point eight percent increase. That's my deal.
Do you want me to do the math? I'm sorry.
It's right in that area. I mean, I already know it's right in that area. We, we talked about it. We had nineteen point nine seven.
If you use the ethic, if you use the EDA money instead of putting it towards pavement or something else, if you did it towards operations, I would obviously offset that.
Personally, I just, EDA doesn't need that money and I, I don't think they need it. And I mean, that's my opinion.
You're saying the one point two eight nine, take a hundred out of there?
And take the hundred from EDA and apply it to that. So you're getting that budget down to one point, one point one eight nine eight five, round it up to one point two. I mean, give somebody extra ten grand.
And what's the percentage increase on that?
I think it's going to be about one, nineteen point eight.
I think it'd be a little lower than that.
It might be. I mean, one point two seven five was nineteen point nine seven.
So I'm just doing the math here.
Yep, that's fine.
And whether or not Gary, you, you like the fire marshal guy? I mean, it's either that or take forty thousand for operation. I mean, I, I don't know where you want it most. If there's value to the fire marshal guy or not.
So the difference between the one point, one point five, one, three, two, sixty that you see in the screen today and the one, two, eight, nine, eight, fifty number that comes from our salon that gave us is two hundred and twenty three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. If you reduce that and the hundred thousand dollars of EDA, again, I'm just taking it out of there. So that the total net number is one, one, eight, nine, eight, fifty for the increase. You're at a seventeen point eight nine percent change.
That's about what I thought, yeah.
Again, the reason why you're off Scott for your number is because I gave you the wrong percentage to start off with when I gave you twenty three point six four.
Okay.
It should be twenty two point seven five. So your number is slightly higher because the math was wrong.
Okay.
Am I right in thinking that the twenty percent is about thirteen thirty, one point three three zero?
You're making me do hard math.
Well, I think that puts the number at seven point nine eight million, I, I think, but.
So if I just do, I just do your one, two, eight, nine, eight, fifty number, you're at nineteen point four percent. So if you.
And maybe, I don't know. How much cushion do you guys have in all your budgets?
One point three.
Maybe you take the hundred grand and you leave it there for a cushion too.
They're Dennis of one point three three. Probably pretty damn close because I guess did.
You want to jump in the step?
Yeah. So twenty percent even is one point three three million. Yeah. So one million, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars is exactly twenty percent.
Well, I've tried to come at this a couple of different ways. And what I've concluded in my own mind is that a twenty percent increase in the budget gets everybody almost everything they want. Where, from where we're at now at twenty two point seven five, we're a hundred and seventy eight K approximately off of, off of a twenty percent number. You know, you can do it with EDA money. You know, I had suggested a bunch of line item things where I thought that they were a little heavy on increases that could have been trimmed back. I didn't get any feedback on any of that, but I think they're, they're all valid to, to look at. I think that truly think that, you know, phasing a couple of these hires, I know, Paul, you've got one guy that you're, you've budgeted to start mid-year. I think we could, you know, if you did that with one or two more of those positions, and I'll tell you straight up, I value the, the fire marshal position more than I do the assistant chief position. And the only reason I do that is because we don't have the, the plan. And I can't tell you my level of frustration with that. That plan was, was by their own documentation was supposed to be done in six months from when we awarded it in October. We're way off of that and, you know, and here we are, you know, guessing at what this ought to look like. And so I'm really disappointed with that, with that company and them taking this long to get us that plan. And I'm sure they've got all their excuses lined up for us, but here we are trying to come to a conclusion on the budget and we got no information.
Council member Fashat, if I will, I just want to clarify one point. That contract was yes, awarded in October. But it was not started till January. So January is when we started getting that going because it, it came out of this year's budget. So in that capacity. And I'll answer a couple of questions right now that Scott had posed. You and I had a brief conversation. I don't have the time to put stuff together that they needed in the first three months. So that three months is on me. The rest of the time goes to the county and trying to get numbers from the county in that capacity. So there's really nothing on Fitch and Associates. It comes back to here and it comes back to the county.
Well, they shouldn't have given us a timeline that said six months.
I made that decision to go six months because I figured that would be something that we could accomplish. But the reality with personnel challenges in the first ninety days, that wasn't going to happen. And then today, I still have time to do stuff. And I, I guess I'll just take this if I can for a moment. I know people don't see the value in the positions that I've proposed, but I do not have the time to do an emergency management plan. There's significant liability that the city holds every single day by me not being able to put standard operating procedures together and look at the big picture. All I function with today is day to day operations to make sure that the fire truck goes down the road. That's not what the fire chief should do. I understand you guys were sold that I should be the fire marshal, the fire chief, the emergency management director. I'm now the health and safety director because we don't have an aware program. So that's something else we don't currently have. There isn't enough time in my day to do my operations. And I will say the one thing I'm frustrated about is no one on this council has asked me any questions on how the fire department operates. I cannot sell something when you don't ask any questions. That's my frustration.
The only comment I have to that, Gary, and I understand what kind of fire department you want. We had a fire department before you got here and it seemed to function okay. I understand you want it different, but we just can't get to that common ground. I mean, your, your fire department wants the top notch deal.
No, it's, that's not what I want, Scott. We're not doing the basic things. Hence, we had a thirty eight thousand dollar engine repair.
That was carelessness. That had nothing to do with engine repair.
Had to do with, that had to do with maintenance issues that we don't have staff to take care of stuff. At the end of the day, all I'm trying to do is meet the needs of the, meet the needs of the community from calls as well as make sure that the community is safe. There's no ability to do emergency management plan. There's no ability to, we can be reactive all day long. That's the reality. And I don't believe a fire department should be reactive. I understand that we are a consumer without a doubt. We're, we're a big vacuum that sucks on the general fund without a doubt. I, I don't have any revenue really to put back in there. Except for maybe through some fees from the fire marshal's perspective. But without the ability of additional help for me from an assistant chief's position. Kevin Astor, my assistant chief, is doing stuff daily. There's other staff in the organization that are doing things daily in order to make the organization run. So that's not fair and equitable to what they signed on for either. They are paid on call firefighters. They should come to training. They should help with, with pub ed on occasion, and then they should respond to calls. The reality is, is I'm asking part-time firefighters to come and do stuff that I can accomplish. It's, I, I understand. I'm not looking for the top notch, Scott. I, I can understand.
I don't begrudge you for one, the top notch.
No, and, and that's not what I'm looking for. What I'm looking for is the ability to actually operate the fire department and do what my job truly is to is look at big picture. Get standard operating guidelines put together, which we don't have. We haven't had. Travis can speak to that. But the reality is, is there's a need. It's not because Gary wants to have, if Gary, if, if money was unlimited, we'd have a full-time department. I'm not, you know, looking for a full-time department, nor do I think do we need one right now. No. Down the road, yes. But the reality is, is I need help and minimizing, I'll, I'll tell you right now, and I've told this to Zach. And that is if I'm not giving any assistance, the only thing that I can do is what I'm doing today, and that's all operations. So you're getting nothing else from me other than operations. I'm moving trucks around. We had four calls the other day. I was at Mercy twice. I had to go pick up a firefighter. I rode in with North, had to get a ride back. We have twenty six percent more of the calls during the daytime than we do at night. So I'm not trying to pull the wool over the council on what I need. It's just, I need help. I can't do everything that I need to do. And I guess the biggest thing to answer your question, Scott, is this, is that prior to my arrival. My understanding and talking to Zach and historical from other people and Travis, there was zero communication. I won't say zero. There was very little communication between the fire department and city council. So today, in my discussion with Councilman Fashat, he didn't understand the brief conversation we were able to have. By sure happenstance, running into each other over at Public Works, old Public Works building, understanding the paid on call system. And I want to try to educate every single member of the council on what the department needs. And it's, it's easy to see the big red trucks going down the road, but there's a lot of things that need to happen to make those go down the road. And I'm, you know, we have host testing tomorrow, that on Thursday, that's going to consume my day. I tried to have a meeting with, uh, over at Dayton Elementary today. I had to leave that to go over to a four inch gasoline, natural gas rupture. So I mean, I get very little time in my office. You can ask Zach if he's looking for me. He's either sending me an email or sending me a text trying to figure, hey, do you have time? So I'm not trying to make this an Minneapolis fire or St. Paul fire. I just need help to do basic things is really what I need. And it's not because, you know, I understand all, all of you up there prioritize things differently and I respect that, but I need help. I mean, the liability that the city holds by me only being able to focus on operations and the stuff that was not done before, and that's no disrespect to anyone before me. There's only so many time, you know, you heard it tonight about people trying to want to take additional time to apply for, you got what, a part-time parks person, two people applied. It's difficult to get people and then throw more stuff onto them when they arrive based on, hey, I need this done or this done and this done. I'm getting very few people. Luckily, we're up to ten now for the parade on Saturday. Up until a couple of days ago, there was three people. To get people, I have, still have to send out an email to try to get people to help with Dayton Safety Day over at Dayton Elementary that I was meeting with today. So we have lots of challenges trying to meet today's needs based on call volume, fire marshal position. I was out of inspections, final for commercial buildings as we continue to grow there. I was over at the Sands the other day putting keys in boxes. So if you're looking for me, you're probably not going to find me in my office. So I'm not trying to build this empire. I'm really trying to make the organization operate as it should and move the organization forward. So my plea to the council is I need help. You guys choose not to do that. I understand that, but then I have to just, I can only do so much. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay. So where are we at? Did you, did you finish the number?
Matt was going to try to say something.
Oh, Matt, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, but this is my first time going through this and I've been, I've been listening to, you know, the meetings of N S A. And I know David and I connected and he helped kind of help me with some guidance too on, on some of this. And one thing he and I talked about that I shared with him, and, and maybe I look at this, this wrong or, or through rose colored glasses is, you know, when I look at, at what this, this looks like, make sure. I look at what we want to achieve as a city and then figure out what that's going to cost. I, I believe that we, we hire people that, that we need to, at some level, trust that they know, they know what is a high priority for the city and believe in that. I, I don't disagree that, you know, staggering hires versus hiring for a time makes sense. And I would say, you know, we went from fifteen hundred houses in twenty eighteen to over three thousand in twenty twenty three, and we've hired one officer. We had five years to stagger those hires and, and didn't do it. Now we're at a point where, you know, we, we kind of have to play a bit of catch up. And while I would prefer to hire one every other year, one a year, and I'm not saying we need to double the number of officers because we have doubled the amount of homes. I think there's some efficiency and scale there that, that we should achieve. And per the recommendation of the police chief, we are achieving. You know, I, I just, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm lost. I, I, I want to believe, and I do believe that the people that we've chosen to work full-time in the city are, are doing so with the, the goal of trying to make the city, you know, what it needs today. And I, I think part of the, the, what we're looking at this year is we've lacked in the growth that we've needed for the past five years. We're playing catch up because we had a lot of growth really quick. I'm not pointing the blame at anyone particular. I, I'm just pointing out what I'm seeing when I look at this. And, and I, and we all got the email from Zach where everyone's at. I, I'm okay with the twenty two point seven five percent. I, I think we need to play catch up. I, I'm tired of saying we'll do two this year, two next year and just keep kicking it down the road a little bit. I think we've kicked it down the road to the point where we are where we are today. And so that, that, that's my opinion. Again, I'm not, I'm not pointing the finger at anyone. I'm not personally attacking anyone. I'm just telling you know, kind of how I, I've come to this, how I view it. You know, it, it's, it's not, I don't think it's easy for anyone to ask for help. I think to do it publicly, you know, out in the open like this is probably part of the job. But I, I just want to say thank you to the, the fire chief as well for sharing that because I'm sure that that wasn't necessarily an easy thing to, to come out and say. So.
Zach, can you go back to the expenditures, bar charts?
Um, you mean this one?
Um.
Or this one? Don't think I had another expenditure.
Don't think I had another expenditure, um, graph, impact.
You know what? That might be my spreadsheet at home.
I don't, yeah, I don't. I don't have one for expenditures. And you're looking at expenditures probably year over years, my guess?
Yeah, yeah. Cause we have not scrimmed. Um, I mean, there was a confusion that somehow our last year's tax increase, living increase of 3% somehow equated to not much spending, but there was still 12% spending. So.
Yeah. So the difference between, yeah, if you're looking at it, I will say that the increase in the general fund has, it increased in 22 to 23, and it was $570,000 in those. And I'm going based off memory here as best I can. Um, in that position was a community development director position and a fire chief position. And.
And if you look at.
And then also like a s- additional, you know, obviously line items like motor fuels and all other stuff, that insurance and all the stuff that goes up.
So, so Matt, to your comment of kicking stuff down the road, if you look at our expenditures over the past four or five years, they've gone up.
And I didn't say they didn't go up. I didn't say we're not spending more money than our money comes in. What I'm saying is, I, I just look at one piece, which is I look at the total police staff. From 2018 to 2023, we've doubled in size and we've added one officer. Like, I, I get that he's asking for four basically next year, but, but that has to do with the fact that we weren't investing in those, that those positions. In my opinion, this is Matt's opinion, my belief that we probably should have over the past five years, right? And that's why instead of asking for one, maybe two this year, he's asked, asking for four because we haven't, we haven't done that in the past. And so again, I'm not saying we're not spending more money over a year. That's, that's not, not what I'm saying at all. So if, if that's how it came off, I apologize. What, what I'm saying is, is when it comes to some of these items that were asked, that are being asked for this year by staff, I, I believe that they're asking for things that they feel is a priority. And I think some of the data, I'd say a lot of the data backs that up when I look at staffing levels, the growth, what we've done, what we need.
Call volume, yeah.
And, and that, again, this is just, this is Matt's opinion. I, I'm not, I, I believe that we're at a point now where I, I don't think we're necessarily going to convince each other to change our minds, right?
Yeah, it does seem like we're kinda rehashing.
As much time as you want talking about this. I just don't know if we're going to get to a point where, now I'm going to convince, convince anyone else that's already there that, you know, this is a need, or excuse me, I don't want to use that word, this is a priority of the city to have. And that's a.
Yeah.
Go ahead Dennis, sorry.
No, you're, you're fine. I, I, it does seem like we're kind of going over stuff that we were, we went over in the work sessions, but in fact, it almost seems like this session had a kind of rehashing of the last work sessions. It is every year.
I'll let, can I add one more piece? And I, I would, I, I might, I can tell you from the conversation we're gonna have, we're not going to end up at 22.75%. I, I, I just don't think we're gonna end up there. It'd be a flabbergast if we did. But instead of us trying to necessarily micromanage the budget, I'm a, if we're gonna give them a number, I say we give them a number and let them decide what they want, where they feel would be the most impactful to the city and come back to us. That'd be my, my two cents. If, because we're gonna, my guess is based upon, unless something else changes, Scott's number clearly has dropped significantly from the email that, that Zach had sent out. Unless other people's numbers have dropped significantly, my guess is we're gonna end up somewhere around 20%.
I would agree, Matt, with, you know, us getting in, into the weeds. Well, for one thing, I, I did it and, and I don't see where any of those got incorporated into any of these revised versions of the budget. So, uh, I'm kinda feeling done with that too. I, I feel like we set a number and, and you guys figure it out.
Can I ask something that's kind of, I mean, it's, it's with the budget, but it's a kind of a separate question. We just lost Paisi, Paisi, is that how you pronounce her name?
Correct, that's correct, yeah.
Some of this lost building permit revenue, um, the 325K.
Yes.
So we initially brought on two assistants because we didn't have a director.
Correct.
Now we have a director.
Correct.
Can we just not fill this spot and help lower the impact?
We can. Yeah, we, the, the position is still in the budget, obviously, because it's just two weeks ago that, that position resigned. So it's still in the budget. Um, we can cut it if we want to. Again, not all of it, like 100% of it's building permit revenue. It's some of it is general fund tax levy. Again, some of it is building permit revenue as well, so that will have an impact overall. But if that's the direction of the council and not hire, the reason why the hire wasn't put on directly right away is because we just have, we have a director on staff now and, um, doesn't feel appropriate to hire somebody when he just started to say, okay, you're getting an associate planner when we don't really know what we need now because we now have that expertise in-house. Um, so again, the position is in the budget. We can remove them. We don't, we did not do that again, just based on timing. Um, and also getting the feedback from the council, what you want to do too is also important for us.
Like I said, I think we rushed getting those two because we had none.
Um, we, we took two because we had planned on getting one, and there are two that came up that were of different, um, levels of expertise. When they came in, they, we said, well, this person is probably help out this other person who he doesn't have as much, but has, um, a bright future in, in the planning world.
And is that 325 also based on our current fee schedule?
It is based on our current fee schedule. That is correct.
And we know we're probably gonna make a correction to that. I don't know what that impact would be.
I don't know that. And the only reason I say that is because I don't know what building's gonna be next year. So we probably use the same number we did this year, which was, uh, I think this year we, in 20, or in 2024, when we're looking at the number, I think we did 200. Right now, to date, I think we're at 185, and I'm using that as a rough guess, but we're at today in 2023.
Yep, 185.
We budgeted for like 250 or 275 in 23. I don't think we're gonna hit that. Uh, we used 200 when looking at the 2024 budget, and that's why the decrease in revenue there.
Well, okay.
But, but I want to, um, talk about Councilman Fashat's point. I, we, I appreciate that and I responded back late. I was unfortunately didn't know. You were looking for a response, so I apologize about that. But, um, the idea was that once we got some feedback from the council of what to do, we can look at those line items that you posted out because I can greek. I mean, if they're looking at a, if we're looking at a 50, $60,000 cut, that's gonna be, what's gonna be looked at is those line items of, okay, where can we trim a couple thousand dollars? Getting in the weeds of what staff would do is, okay, can we cut a couple grand here? Can we cut a couple grand there? Looking at those line items that you looked at, and I appreciate you looking at those because it does help us focus on where to go. So don't feel like your feedback wasn't taken because it was. Um, it just wasn't incorporated anything because we did not hear. Consistent feedback from the council has been tough this year, I will say, first from staff-wise, is because it's been quite a divided council of what direction we'd like to go. And the feedback from council last year was much more consistent with, we want this, and it's, you know, how do we get this? And it's much easier for staff to make adjustments and changes. Not saying that we're not amendable to changes. It's just hard to take direction when the council's divided on different things that they'd like to see. And when we don't have a unified council, it makes it very difficult for staff to go, which side do I pick?
It shouldn't be unified. I mean.
And not saying it's unified all the time, but sometimes there's general consensus of, our idea is to cut spending.
Anybody saying it's a unified makes, makes it easier.
I'm sure it's easier if we say, if everybody says, hey, take whatever you want.
Well, yeah, good.
What's disappointing is, what's disappointing is, is from what I'm hearing, there was direction for 20% all along, and we still get the 1.5. So the direction that you were given, we didn't even take it into consideration.
I don't believe that's true.
We still ask, we're asking for the whole.
Scott, where was their direction for 20%? I, I guess I, I, that's something I've never.
That's what I'm hearing here. Do you, do you?
So that guys did not say 20% to him?
But what I think, what I think what Zach's saying is the percentages range drastically in, in, and I would say what, one of the things I struggled with this, be my first time, is, is like, I went into this knowing what my goal was. Like, I, I, I wanted to have two officers on at all times, thought that was important. I wanted to get us back to, you know, having regular fire inspections, getting the, the fire staff what they needed. Um, and, and those, those are my two things, goals that I had kinda, kinda going into budget season. But I, Matt personally believe this city needs. And, um, I, I guess from, I didn't hear a goal from everyone. I think maybe, maybe I'm speaking for you Zach. I think that's where my, where I also struggled, where it was, it was more based on the number. It was based about just cutting taxes. It, it wasn't based upon a particular goal than just lowering it, which if that's a goal, that's fine, but.
I'm gonna end you after you right there.
I, I think, I think that's where Zach may be, maybe talking is, there's, there's, we weren't all saying we need to lower taxes. It was this, maybe a different pull within the council. And I'm not trying to speak on behalf of Zach, nor am I trying to put words in anybody's mouth because no one said their goal was to lower taxes. I, I just didn't hear what everyone else's goal was around this. And that's where I've, I've struggled with trying to align with others.
Well, it's, to me, it shouldn't be about aligning with each other. I mean, everybody should have their opinion. I mean, my numbers get two and a half police officers in, with the revenue from the traffic cop, you get the, you get the traffic cop included. I mean, that, for 450, you can get three people. And that's what that comes to. The only, the main issue I have is, is I just don't, personally, I don't see the full, the full-time assistant chief. I just don't see it.
All right. Well.
The, the only other comment I wanted to make, um, a, around this is that, you know, I, and, and I, this doesn't come from anybody in particular, but I, I feel it anyway that, you know, that we're not, we're not being supportive of police and fire. And I only looked at the fire budget, but last year we increased the fire budget by 60%. We're looking at increasing it by 55% this year. So it's not like we're not supporting that public safety function. Um, you know, I think we're, we're very seriously looking at adding four positions in the police department. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know why we're, we're feeling bad about it, about being able to provide a 20% increase in the budget. That's a huge increase.
That's a huge increase.
In one year.
It's an eight million dollar budget.
And, and Gary, nobody expected you to come in and solve all, all our problems in one year. I think the year has been one of discovery. You know, a lot of these gaps that you've identified with the emergency management and the aware plan and so on, you know, they've existed for many years. Um, there, there are gaps in their liabilities and, and I think that we need a plan to correct them. But I don't think we have to try to do it in, in one big gulp. And I don't think we could pull it off anyway. That said, I think that, you know, we're looking for $178,000. There seems to be, um, interest in talking about the EDA number. If that's true, that's more than half of it. $78,000 off of these other line items. I can give it to you on a napkin. I mean, I, you know, I just, I, I don't, I don't know why we're, why we're stuck there. So, you know, rather than, rather than trying to figure out, you know, do we take this line item or do we delay that hire for three months? I think that, well, I'm just speaking for myself here, but I'm kinda done. I'm at 20% and a number above that I won't vote yes for, and that's, that's where I'm at.
Um, I'll actually make a motion to make the budget 1.28985. And then you guys figure it out.
What's the percentage of that, sorry?
Uh, that, that's using, again, that's using Scott's number there. So it's 19.4% overall change of the levy.
And, and that, that 100 grand for EDA, do what you gotta do with it. I mean, I don't think EDA needs it. So there we are. You can shuffle that around.
So, yeah, that, that is the direction of council, which is fine. That's the motion made on the co, um, floor. Uh, I just want to make sure we had, we have to amend the resolution for the EDA specifically. If it's not, we're gonna go to the, we would have to go to zero, which is, again, just want to make sure everyone notes that, that, that there are two resolutions on the floor. The only one that have to be adjusted would have to be the EDA one because they have to go down to zero if you're suggesting moving it to somewhere other than the EDA, that's cutting it or whatever else. Um, and then we would just put in the preliminary levy as the total number.
So for the, for what you have to submit to the county, the EDA number, we have to have an EDA number?
Correct. It's a separate levy resolution. So it's a separate, if you look technically at your, um, tax statements, you'd have an EDA levy. It's a tiny, tiny percentage, but technically a portion of it, of your taxes goes to EDA.
And if we figure out a, a way to fill other holes later, we can't bump it up. If we go to zero with the EDA, we can't go.
So the EDA one is put in place.
That's a one-way street.
I will tell you that it was put in place by the previous financial consultant because it is exempt from the tax levy limit that if it's set by the state, we would be exempt from it. That is why it was put in place by your previous financial consultant. I speak from personal experience.
So maybe you can tell me again, Scott, your motion was?
My motion would be that the budget.
Total budget?
The total budget is 1.28985.
An increase.
Increase. And if staff needs the under grand, we just take the EDA under grand down to zero, and that, and they use that with what they want.
Well, wait a minute. So there's, there's two numbers. There's the E number and then there's this.
City, yep.
This levy number.
Yep.
Does your number include the E number in it?
Does your number include the 100 or does?
The 1.28985.
Includes the 100 for EDA?
Yes, but we reappropriate that 100 into.
So what, yeah, Councilor Solonic is trying to say is that the total increase at the bottom number would be 1.289. He would reallocate the 100 grand from levy from the EDA, subtract it and then add it up above. So that the total, total increase, so you'll see the increase in the general fund being, and I'm gonna use 1.389, but the EDA would be a negative 100 grand, which would equal the total of 1.289. I think that's what you're saying.
Correct.
Wait, did you just say 1.389?
1, 1.289.
Yeah, 289.
At the total in the levy, minus 100 grand for the EDA. So you'd have to add that back into the general fund because we're re-appropriating the taxes like you mentioned. So it'd be 1389 in the general fund, negative 100,000 in the ju, in the EDA, that nets out to 1289 in the total levy. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
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 I want to make sure everyone's clear on what is being motioned on.
And that ends up being a 19.4?
That's 19.4%. The total. Again, we're looking at, I'm looking at the total levy when I give you all these numbers and all the tax rates and stuff I give you are everything included, except for the franchise fee, which I know you don't like to discuss.
That's gonna give them, that's gonna put 100 back into it.
So when I looked at the total, so I'm looking at, at total citywide levy for that bottom number.
The final number.
Yep. If you put that increase at 1.389.
No, 1.289.
289.
The bottom total number.
Final number, final number increase.
Trying to get my thing up here.
Okay.
So the EDA or the general levy goes up that 100.
I will show you in one second.
EDA levy goes to zero.
To zero.
To get to the, to the 1.289. So where's the 1.389 come from?
I'll pop the screen up right now.
He was adding at the top and then subtracting it off.
Here's your number. I'll zoom in so you can see it. Here's your general fund would be 1389, negative 100,000 in the EDA. Give you a total net of 1.28985 is what you're saying, Councilor Solonic, correct?
Yep.
So the total increase in tax levies, 1289 at the bottom.
Cones. Okay. So you.
Negative 100 grand here.
You pull it in and then pull it out.
Yeah, pull it out.
I get, I got.
The only reason that would have to be done is because.
It just changes this number from 0.9.
And then you got a negative. So the bottom line is the 1.289 at the bottom.
Yep.
Okay. I got you.
Gives you 19.4%, which is what you're stating.
That's what I'm stating.
And it would just, the reason why we have to do that is because of the two different resolutions. And that's, that's fine. I mean.
You guys are good for that.
I'll second it. All right.
My, my fear there is, we'll just see where it goes.
Yeah. And again, this is the preliminary one. Doesn't mean it can't come down. We don't have insurance numbers yet.
We can also wiggle, wiggle the pieces.
You can wiggle around. Yep. We can wiggle around pieces.
Okay.
I want to note that the staff is not trying to fight council. That's not, I think that's what it's been the whole time. And we feel like we're fighting council and we're not. We're just trying to get good direction from council. And it's been, I will say, this year has been much tougher to get to clear direction.
As you get closer to three to two, and either way.
Correct. And like I said, just, we're not trying to fight council at all.
If it was four to one, it was easy.
Yeah. We just want to.
Cause.
Provide all the information.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So is that a good enough motion? Did that motion, is it clear enough?
That suffices for both because it's, again, it's a motion for both resolutions, but you're adjusting one resolution to zero.
We're zeroing out the EDA.
Correct. And then doing 1389 in the general fund levy, like stated and shown on the screen. Not right now, correct. Matt, can you see that? Did you want me to put that other screen back up?
You can not see that because.
I, I, I can't see it. I can understand. I also lost you all on camera, but, um, I, I understand what's going on. So we're getting rid of the EDA money and moving up the general levy essentially for the number that Scott posed.
Apparently I can't share my click share to the Zoom feed.
So, so we're clear on the motion?
Yes. As long as you guys are clear.
As long as you, as long as you guys are clear.
I could put it back up if you'd like me to do that.
I know what I'm trying to say.
Think I am. The bottom line is that bottom number when everything is added up.
I will add it.
Okay.
I will show it again just so that everyone's clear. But again, it's not trying to, not trying to confuse anybody. So, um, this number was shown as 1513 previously.
Yep.